Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
Good morning. Let's let the Monday, May 7, 2018, 9:00 in the morning meeting of the Alamance County Board of Commissioners come to order. The Chair, Amy Sky-Galey, and all the other Commissioners are present. So if Commissioner Boswell will please lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
I certainly will, spireheads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for all the blessings you give us as we come out this beautiful morning and look at the flowers and the beauty of your earth. Thank you, God, for what you give this country. We are so blessed, and sometimes I think we don't even recognize what we have. God be with us today as we make decisions for our county, for our children, and just help us to make the right decisions for our community. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on our agenda are the public speakers. I have three who have signed up on the public comment sign-in sheet, two who signed up this morning in person, and one who signed up online. Before we call the public speakers, I would like to remind the audience of the public comment policy that was adopted by the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. It was revised in September of 2014 that the comment period shall be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Then there will be a Commissioners' Response Period immediately following the public comment period. That's a point of response from the Commissioners to respond to comments that have been made, not debates. Each person desiring to speak during the public comment period shall have three minutes to make his or her remarks. That time limit will be enforced today. There shall be no more than three speakers on any one topic per meeting. That shall be enforced today. It is recommended that speakers desiring to speak on the same topic and advocating the same position choose one person to speak for all. Speakers shall be acknowledged by the Board or by the Board Chair or other Presiding Commissioner and shall be allowed to speak only in the order designated. Speakers shall address the Board from the lectern at the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. And ladies and gentlemen, that's important for the clerk who keeps the minutes of the meeting. That helps her to keep correct minutes. And if the speaker requires accommodation for a disabling condition, if you would please contact the county clerk 24 hours prior to the meeting, then we'd be happy to accommodate that request. Public comment is not intended to require the Board of Commissioners to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers shall address all comments to the Commissioners as a whole and not to individual Commissioners or to the audience. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience shall not be allowed. Speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation. If you have prepared written remarks, you can leave those with the county clerk, and she will be happy to make those part of the official minutes of this meeting. Speakers shall not discuss any of the following matters which contain concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the county, matters which are the subject of public hearings, and matters which are closed-session matters. Please don't use profanity or racial slurs, and don't engage in personal attacks that by relevance, duration, or tone may threaten or perceive to threaten the orderly and fair progress of the discussion. Then we also have some rules that were duly adopted by this Board, Rules of Procedure for the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. Section 7, decorum of the audience. Audience members shall refrain from making unsolicited comments during the meeting. During speakers from the floor or debate by the Board, audience members shall refrain from conduct which disrupts the proceeding. That can be cheers, hissing, booing, clapping, cursing, or any other conduct which disturbs the proceedings. And don't show signs that obstruct the views of others. Please silence for cell phones and other electronic devices. Disruptions of official meetings are a Class II misdemeanor. That's North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-3, 18.7. A person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting and who, upon being directed to leave by the Presiding Officer, willfully refuses to leave the meeting is guilty of a Class II misdemeanor. So that is something that when I became Board Chair in December, we started reviewing those at the beginning of every meeting, and that is not intended by reviewing those rules which are available on the county website. It's not intended to be a reflection on anybody who has spoken to the Board or who is expected to speak to the Board or any particular circumstance. And I have said that repeatedly since we began doing this. So with that being reviewed, the public comment signup sheet, the first on the list is Keisha Penya, if she is present. And we'll check the overflow room to see if Ms. Penya is there.
Good morning.
Good morning. What do I need to state?
Your name and address, please.
My name is Keisha Penya, and I am at 301 West Washington Street in Meben, North Carolina. I stand with my neighbors today as a concerned citizen and resident in opposition to the federal program 287G that allows our local law enforcement to act as ICE agents in Alamance County. As many of us know, Sheriff Terry Johnson and his department lost their application status in 2012 after a lawsuit was filed against them by the Department of Justice because of a long pattern and well-documented history of racial profiling in the Latino community in our county. The department's actions were questionable then, and I personally find it questionable now, that the sheriff has decided to reapply for the program, especially during this current administration's political climate and divisive language. There are many wounds placed on the Latino community here in Alamance County that are still fresh from the families being torn apart, trauma that I can only imagine and cannot be given an opportunity to heal if the threat and fear of being removed from their homes, their community, and loved ones is continuously looming in their lives. There is no evidence that supports that having 287G has made or will make our community safer. In fact, there is more evidence to prove that the enactment of this federal program increases the likelihood that more crimes will not be reported and lack of trust in law enforcement will rise. The vast majority of the Latino community are hardworking and here to earn an honest living and raise their families. At Down Home, we have talked to hundreds of people across the county, and many in the Latino community are afraid, they fear their families will be torn apart. They don't want to go out because they are afraid they might be picked up, and that is not fair for them. It is not fair for anyone to have to live with that constant anxiety. It's not fair for any children to grow up without their parents. 287G has no place in our community. Although it has been stated that the County Commissioners have no say in whether the program returns to Alamance County, we do not believe this to be true. As elected officials, it is your duty to prioritize resources in favor of the county's responsibilities, such as our school system, health care, jobs, and public transportation, to name a few. Some of you have stated, if the sheriff says we need it or wants it again, I support him. We, the people, say that Alamance County does not need 287G. It does not need the legal and financial threat to our community. We do not want anyone in our community living in fear for their lives, anyone. We want 287G to stay where it is, out of the sheriff's hands and out of Alamance County, and we want you all to do everything in your scope of power to make that happen. We will continue to use our power with our voices and our votes as we did this morning without any disruptions or whatever was thought to happen. So thank you so much.
All right.
Commissioners Chair, John Thorpe, 624 West Davis Street, Burlington. I have no children who have entered this world yet, but I am the uncle of the world's most beautiful nieces. And the one that tugs at my heartstring the most is the nine-year-old. Her name is Aubrey, Leslyn Thorpe. She's smarter than I, and she's a lot cuter than I. And she talks to her Uncle Jay about everything, everything, and all the ills of her world, and she believes that I can solve them all, only because I stopped her from receiving a spanking from my mom two years ago. So you can imagine the pain I felt when she called me crying. And it wasn't for talking back to her dad or going outside without permission. It wasn't for frightening the dog, but she was afraid that her friend from next door was going to be being moved away. What do you say to a nine-year-old when she calls you and asks you why is she being punished? Why is her friend being punished for living next door to her? Her eloquent uncle, as I like to believe, was stuck with words, and I told her everything would be all right. If 285G returns, I'm afraid that Aubrey's going to be going fishing with her friends one day, and she's going to witness racial profiling, deportation, arrest, crying, and a family being ripped apart while she stands alone on the riverbank, wondering why her Uncle Jay lied to her. 285G, it affects our economy, and for those who are undocumented that spend money, it turns Sheriff Department into a federal agents, which is illegal. And how do I tell her that her friend is gone? Commissioner Boswell, you prayed earlier and said, you prayed for the beautification of this community. Well, I think the people are the beautification of this community. We have one of the most beautiful communities. And you prayed and asked to do the right decision and make the right decision for this community. As a man of faith, I definitely believe God is answering. Thank you.
All right.
Ann Casabon, 3469 Amick Road, Elon. And good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to add my voice to the voices both inside local government and across this county who doubt or oppose a new 287G agreement. And such an agreement uses local police forces to extend the power of ICE, Immigrations, and Customs Enforcement, while Congress has no clear or fair immigration policy. I make my comments with all due respect to the sheriff, who has a difficult job. But we must also respect the people in Alamance County who are undocumented, but who are our neighbors, our friends, our coworkers. They are living good lives. Many have children who are U.S. citizens, who came here to escape poverty and sometimes violence. They are paying taxes, and I understand they are paying about 6% of my Social Security benefits. We do not want to see these families torn apart or living constricted lives in terror that they will be separated. That is the most important point. Under the 287G agreement in the past, Alamance County was in the national spotlight as a place where Latinos were targeted, and a broken trail light could land you in jail if you were D W B, driving while brown. New businesses and people do not want to move to such a county. We have laws already that allow us to arrest people committing serious crimes. A new 287G agreement would not make our community more secure. In fact, very few counties have 287G agreements. Seventy-nine in the whole of the United States, six in our state of 100 counties. And that's because I think communities are safer when people trust the police and can report crimes. I urge you to use your control of the budget and your ability to pass resolutions to oppose another 287G agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casabon. And I also want to thank the, I want to thank the audience for its decorum and its respectful participation thus far because it's a little bit refreshing. So Commissioners' responses.
I'd like to make a response.
Of course.
First, I was at the rally this morning. I was asked to come to listen and to provide some support. I've been on public record of opposing the 287G program. That the sheriff and I have had discussions about this. He understands my position, and no matter what happens, we're going to still have a good working relationship. One of the things that, I agree with all the comments that were said this morning. But going back to the rally, I just want to thank the local law enforcement officers who were there, mostly Graham Police and then our sheriff deputies, because they were there to actually protect the protesters from counter protests. You never know when you have a demonstration like this what might happen, and they put a lot of planning and time and effort in making sure everybody is safe. They do a wonderful job. On the legal aspect of the 287G program, I did meet with our county attorney, Clyde Albright. And Clyde, you might want to chime in, but my understanding is that if we do an agreement with ICE for the 287G program, based on the legal basis for such an agreement, federal law allows the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security to enter into an agreement with a state or a subdivision of a state, which would be, in this case, Alamance County. And it would seem to me that it's this Board that would have to approve such an agreement. It can't just be the sheriff approving it. Is that correct?
That is in their agreement, yes. That's in federal law.
And I may be the only Commissioner up here who opposes 287G. You all can speak for yourself, but I think that we ought to really give consideration to some of the downsides of doing this again and for what seems to be a little benefit as time goes on. This is not something that's on our agenda for today. I don't know if it will ever be on our agenda. It just depends on if the sheriff wants to bring it forward or our county attorney wants to bring it forward. And I'm sure that you would recommend, make a recommendation one way or another, whether that you would recommend this body approve it or not approve it.
That's correct. It's on the agenda.
Right. But it's not on the agenda for today.
Yes.
But I appreciate everybody showing up and making very heartfelt remarks about the negatives about this arrangement with ICE. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say something. The 287G has been proven to work in Alamance County. This is a country of laws and not of anything else but laws. It is about a person's individual thoughts and what they want to do. I'm in favor of the 287G, and I hope we return it to the 287G.
Mr. Sutton?
Anybody else? I'm going to have a positive comment about something you've said, and I hope you'll appreciate it. But before I do, for the record, we were the second county in the state of North Carolina to get this 287G. 287G is the number of the law. The law is not but a small paragraph if you get in and looking at it. Get in and look at it. That's the law. We were the eighth in the nation to do it, and I'm not ashamed of that. I wholeheartedly supported it when I discovered what the law was. And this goes back 20-some years. It's a long time. But I'll tell you what I've told the sheriff, and I mean this sincerely. I pushed it from the beginning, but I'm not pushing it now, but I will support it. The sheriff has a lot of pressure on him. I think this program caused him excessive stress, and physical, mental, but he's a good law enforcement agent, and I have told him, if you want to do it, I'll support you. But I'm not going to sit back and request it as much as I did from the beginning. But something you said, and I think you ought to be concerned about this. George Will, this week, I think it's, is that the show he's on? Yeah. Years ago, and Paul Kruger, or Krugman, whatever, columnist from the New York Times, in his book, he states, if we're supposed to already know this, that the reason for excessive immigration, i.e., and a byproduct of it, illegal immigration, is to fund the roles of Social Security to a big degree. I mean, I've heard it from him. I heard it from George Will. George Will on ABC, I recorded it. He made the statement of how much money was being taken from illegal immigrants and being put into the Social Security Trust Fund, as if we're supposed to already know it. Now, I'm for strict enforcement of the laws of this country on citizenship and the processes that we should go through to get it. But to sit back and not speak out that monies are being taken for that purpose, knowing that they'll never get it, that's as much as an atrocity of government as a lot of other things. And I'm not sure about your percentage or exactly what category you're referring that percentage to. But a lot of people believe there's ulterior motives for all of this. Taxes, Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever. But I sympathize. I'm not sure what your goal was in stating that, but I think it's sad to have a government that takes monies from people, knowing that they're not going to give it back to them and/or fund other people. There should be, we've got to correct the problems we've got with this social dilemma that we're in. And it is a social dilemma. I don't think there's any question of that. But that's all.
I think I'm a little bit with Tim there on that whole issue. Number one, sheriff's not brought anything to us to talk about in this program. Having been on this for several years, I do know the heartache, heartburn, and everything else that came with our last go-round with this, unfortunately. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's the right thing right now. I just, we've been through a lot, and that's just my thoughts on it right now.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I will comment that our first speaker spoke about well-documented problems with the program in the past, and in response to that, I recall that the lawsuit brought by the Department of Justice was thrown out for lack of evidence at the summary judgment stage. And so I think that we need to recall that, remember that, as a community, that the sheriff was shown not to have, or the Department of Justice could meet their burden of proof in showing that the sheriff had done anything wrong. And then Ms. Casabon talked about how few counties across the country have 287G agreements. Few counties have the challenges that Alamance County faces. I've been told many times by different people that Alamance County is considered to be a drug hub of the southeast because we have I-40 and I-85 cutting right through us, and because it's so easy to get right on and off the interstate in so many different places that it's easy for drug traffickers to exchange their drugs here, and that there are a lot of, I think that that distinguishes us from other counties in the country. I've spoken with the sheriff a good bit about this program, and I hesitate today to speak on his behalf because that's not my role, and to share with you things that the sheriff has told me because I don't think that would be appropriate. But my understanding from speaking to the sheriff is that he is, there's two, the 287G law has two models. There's the field model, and then there's the jail model. The field model is the one in which local deputies are trained and deputized by the federal government to serve as ICE agents in the field. That's not what the sheriff wants to do. He doesn't want to have Alamance County Sheriff's deputies going out into our community enforcing immigration law. As I understand it, that's not the issue here. And people who are concerned about that, or people who continue to stoke that fear, spread misinformation, encourage people in vulnerable communities not to reach out to law enforcement for fear that a victim is going, if a crime is going to turn around and be investigated, I think that those people have a moral obligation to stop doing that, to talk to the sheriff and find out what it is that he wants to use the program for. The other part of 287G, other than the field model, is the jail model. And under the jail model, the sheriff would have two duties. One would be to house ICE detainees, just like he already houses federal prisoners or federal detainees in the county jail, just like we house inmates from other counties, and we get paid by those counties, we get paid by the federal government to do that service for them. We would be doing the same thing for the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency. And so that would help us using a county asset to do something which is legal and to help a federal agency. So I don't see anything wrong at all with that. The other thing the sheriff wants to do is to have the ICE computer in the jail so that when a person is arrested, he can verify who this person is. Because as I understand it, you know, we have so many hardworking, good people in our community who are undocumented, and it is indisputable that American society is assisted in many ways by the presence of these people. However, there are others in that community who use that as a way to hide. There are dangerous gangs and cartels who are doing vicious acts of violence in this community and in the surrounding counties, and who are hiding in that community. And those are the people the sheriff is seeking to, as I understand it, protect the immigrant community from those who would do this violence to them, as well as to all the citizens of the county. So Ms. Casabon said there are laws already to arrest those who committed serious crimes. It's not a matter of arresting those who have committed serious crimes. It's a matter of identifying those who have committed serious crimes to verify when a person comes into the jail, who is this person, and if he's wanted on a warrant somewhere else, let's get him to where he belongs so he can answer to those charges. So it is not using local police to expand, extend the reach of ICE. It's using ICE resources to make sure that all the people in Alamance County are kept safe, because that's what we all want. So that's all the comments I have about that. And as Mr. Bird and Mr. Sutton reiterated, this is not on our agenda for today. So at this time, we're going to proceed on our agenda, although the Commissioners are finished. Then next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. If everyone has had the opportunity to review it, if I could have a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And we have three items on our consent agenda. If everyone has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is a proclamation about Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, which I am going to read. And we have some guests coming up to present about that.
Is it real?
Thank you. Before I start reading the proclamation, if you want to introduce yourself to the Board and tell us about Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
Okay. I'm Lisa Blum. My husband, David Blum, is the Alamance County CBA-BH chapter president, and usually he does this. I'm not a good public speaker, but CBA is in North Carolina. We're like a grassroots lobbyist organization. We're self-supporting. We mostly lobby for motorcycle safety issues, road conditions. We'd like to work on the distracted driving law. We are those helmet people, I know, but that is not our main agenda. What we really want is, we like to spread motorcycle safety and education awareness because we believe that is what saves lives. So we really appreciate you helping us tap into the national campaign. So we really appreciate you helping us tap into the national campaign and bring that to Alamance County.
Great, thank you. And who's with you?
This is Jean Boswell. And this is Brian Roca Forte. We're here representing the Alamance County Chapter today.
Awesome, thank you. Do you gentlemen want to say anything?
Not particularly. I'm the chaplain of the organization, and just remember, there's a lot of different riders out there today. We even have county commissioners that are bikers today. You know, right, Mr. Boswell?
That's right.
I've heard that there's some sketchy characters.
The Vice President of the United States is a biker.
Great. While we read the proclamation now. Whereas the safety and security of the residents of Alamance County are vitally important, and whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the motorcycle safety have named May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and May is traditionally the time that the number of motorcycles on roadways increases, and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of citizens across North Carolina and Alamance County, and whereas North Carolina has over 193,000 registered motorcycles and more than 177,000 licensed drivers who either have a motorcycle endorsement or a motorcycle learner's permit, and whereas in 2016, there were 3,644 motorcycle-related crashes that resulted in 385 motorcyclists seriously injured and 152 fatalities, and whereas it is important that the citizens of North Carolina and Alamance County be aware of motorcycles on our roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety and share the roadways, and whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle is enhanced through a combination of rider training and experience, good judgment, and a knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements, and the use of highly visible safety gear, and whereas several organizations such as the Alamance County Concerned Bikers Association, along with the North Carolina Motorcycle Safety Education Program, and other state and local motorcycle clubs, and riding and social clubs, are committed to increasing the safe operation of motorcycles by promoting rider safety education programs, and whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month is designed to increase public awareness about motorcycles and safely sharing the road with motorcycles, and to encourage their safe and proper use among motorcycle riders. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Alamance County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Alamance County, North Carolina, and urge all citizens to join in this effort to promote awareness, mutual respect, and safety on our roads. Signed, the 7th day of May, 2018. So, thank you so much.
Can I add one thing to that? Last year, they brought a concern to the board about the grass clippings on the road, and I just think maybe we more want to remind folks out there that that season is fun, again, and it is a safety hazard to bikers.
Yes, it is. Please do not blow your grass clippings in the road. When you hit it, it's like ice. I mean, the bike literally comes right out from under you.
And that involves bikers of a different sort, like myself, bicyclists.
Absolutely, it does affect bicyclists. Yes, it does.
Let me ask you a question. Do you know Steve Inslee down in Asheville?
Yes, I do.
We had a meeting, I do Drivers Ed and absolutely love it, it's the best thing that's ever happened to me. And three weeks ago, it took about six months to do it, but we put together a meeting in Greensboro and had 45 Drivers Ed teachers from different companies come in and meet for, we have to meet twice a year for credits. And they passed a new state law that you have to teach more about motorcycles, and also what you're supposed to do when you get pulled by the police. So those two items alone, we brought in Steve, who is from Asheville, and he had another guy with him, and they spent the night. And I told him for special effects, I thought it'd be good to ride his motorcycle into our meeting room. We meet at a brick company down in the basement, they have a side door that you can literally just drive a forklift in, frankly. And he drove his motorcycle in and put on quite a program. And of course, the Highway Patrol, they came in and had mock pulls of a particular patrolman's son to show what people are supposed to do when you're pulled. But the motorcycle program was real good, and he came in and we gave a contribution to him, and so I hope that helps. But the state law is out there to where we have to teach it more than we've ever taught it.
We're continuing to fight for drivers that have to stay in schools, because we think it's very important. And mostly, we're coming at it from the motorcycle angle, because some of our children are going to become motorcyclists, all of them are going to be driving around motorcyclists. So my husband would speak with us with passion if he was here. He's an IMSA instructor, and he teaches at Eastern and ACC and some of the Montessori schools, and I think we're also at Williams and Graham.
Who's your husband?
Dave Juan.
Okay, yeah, I know the name, but I don't know.
Yeah, but that's what he does, and he loves, that's one of his favorite parts, I think, of CBA is teaching in the Drivers Ed and teaching motorcycle safety and awareness.
I've done over 7,000 students, and I tell you what, it's keeping me young, younger, I think, and definitely happy, so.
I think we've reached almost 180,000 students in North Carolina. So it's a good program.
It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lovely. Thank you so much for coming out today and for sharing this with us. Do I get this today? Oh, okay. There you go. Thank you. I didn't know if we kept it for our records or if y'all kept it.
Thank you all for your time.
Lovely. All right, Emergency Medical Services EMS Week. So, come on up. How are you doing today?
I'm doing well, I hope you all are.
Good. What you want to tell us about EMS Week?
Just that it's a great week, one week out of the year, to really focus on emergency medical services and the job that they do. You know, they're there for us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, Christmas, birthdays, nights, weekends, they never stop. So they're always here, they're a good safety net for us, and it's just a time for us to really step back and really thank all those folks for what they do.
Very true, very appropriate.
That is true. Yeah, very true.
It's tough on EMS workers, I think, since they see a lot of tragedies.
They do, they see a whole lot of stuff.
And pretty rough, can be pretty rough. So I'm to read the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore, we, the Alamance County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, to hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS Stronger Together. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities adopted the 7th day of May, 2018. Thank you so much. All right, our last proclamation today is Stepping Up Day of Action, and I believe that, if you would please pass that to Commissioner Byrd. Commissioner Byrd is going to address that proclamation.
Thank you, Amy. And many of you know that I co-chair the Stepping Up Initiative, along with Susan Osborne, our Director of Social Services. Where's she? She was here, she's back in the back room. And this is a program that we started almost three years ago in August with a resolution from our Board of Commissioners to initiate a program to help keep people that are suffering from mental illness from being incarcerated. And this is a national initiative. So I would like to, let me ask first of all, if anybody is in the room who's a part of the Stepping Up Initiative, would you please stand up? Because this is really a community-wide effort, whether school board member, or county manager, or health director. And I'm sure there are people in the back room that are standing up as well. So I'll go ahead and read this. Let me see, somebody should be standing up here, though, except Linda, why don't you do this as one of our co-coordinators? Come to the podium, please, because we have to hand this to somebody besides me. Linda does a fabulous job working in concert with Gary Andor as our page staff, working under the auspices of the Sheriff's Department. And the sheriff is way behind this program, not way behind, he's with the program 100%.
He's up with it.
He's up with it, right? So I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated 2 million people with serious mental illnesses booked into jail each year, and whereas Alamance County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of their residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas the Alamance County Detention Center is the largest residential facility for mentally ill in our county, as on average, more than 405 inmates are housed at any given time, and of those, more than 11% are screened positive for mental illness or mental illness with co-occurring substance disorder, and whereas it is believed that the prevalence of mental illness in our jail is much higher based on national data of mentally ill incarcerated, which ranges from 24% to as high as 60%, and the problem continues to grow. And whereas the National Association of Counties, which our county is a member of, the Council of State Government's Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation started stepping up to encourage public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails, and whereas Alamance County joined stepping up in August of 2015 with the passing of a resolution to show its commitment to working on this issue locally, and is one of 46 counties in the state currently working diligently to address this critical and growing criminal justice issue, and whereas Stepping Up is hosting a Day of Action on May 16, 2018, for counties to hold an event or participate in local activities to share with constituents the progress they have made in addressing the prevalence of people who have mental illnesses in their jails, raise public awareness and understanding of this important issue, and emphasize their commitment to creating data-driven, systems-level changes to policy and practice to achieve their Stepping Up goals. Now therefore, let it be resolved that we, the Alamance County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 16, 2018, as the Stepping Up Day of Action, and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents of Alamance County to participate in or host associated activities or events on this date. And Linda, is there another page to this? And then it's signed by all the commissioners. And why don't you inform the group about what we have planned on May 16?
Certainly. We would love to see each and every one of you come out who doesn't like free food, right? Sheriff's Office cooks wonderful hot dogs, they've done several fundraisers, they actually will be there that day to cook hot dogs on May 16th, it's at the Historic Depot downtown Burlington and in the amphitheater. We have probably about, we'll be serving for about 45 minutes or so, 45 minutes to an hour, Smitty's Ice Cream will be on hand with free ice cream. We have a good lineup of speakers, the program will go very quickly, but obviously Commissioner Byrd and Sheriff Johnson will open up that Day of Action for us. We'll have local law enforcement jurisdictions, several of them talking about accomplishments with crisis intervention training for law enforcement and EMS responders. We'll also have Burlington Police Chief talking about co-responder program. A very important guest is Curtis Taylor, who's Executive Director of the Alcohol and Drug Treatment of North Carolina. We heard him, had the privilege of hearing him last year at the state Stepping Up Conference. He has a lived experience, that you have just got to hear his story. Remarks from the state office, we have Cody Kinsley, who is Deputy Director of the North Carolina Division of Mental Health, D.D., and Substance Abuse Services will be on hand. They actually asked, could they be a part of our event? So we were quite honored that the state wanted to come and chose Alamance County to be a part of. We also have our Chief Deputy, Tim Britt, who has gone around the state several times talking about a story that he tells is based on just one of the inmates in the Alamance County history of a titch, and it's called Life Sentence 30 Days at a Time, and he'll be speaking briefly about that. Our county manager, Brian Heggard, will be there again to speak about the Diversion and Restoration Center, and we appreciate Brian being a part of this initiative greatly. And just a great day to celebrate, two years, or actually almost three, as Bob said, since you have signed the resolution, and we appreciate your support, and hope you'll all make a point to be there. We'd love to see you that day.
What was the time on that?
It will begin at 11:30. Hot dogs will be served from 11:30 to 12:15 roughly, and then we'll start our program right at 12:15. Hoping for great weather. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Linda. Please share this with our leadership group.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bifferman, what you want to tell us about naloxone?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I've come before you today to request approval for EMS to begin a citizen naloxone campaign. As you all are aware, or maybe so, that naloxone is a drug that's administered after an opioid overdose, and what it does is you've got receptors in your body that like opioids, and the naloxone will actually knock off any opioids that are on those receptors and then block them. So it just takes all the effect away. If one of you were to receive naloxone right now, you'd have no effects from it, it doesn't have any narcotic effects, or really any effects at all if you've not been on opioids. So it's something that we use. EMS has been carrying naloxone now for greater than 35 years. I think the drug's been around since about 1971. Recently, law enforcement and fire agencies in Alamance County and other communities have began to administer this potentially life-saving medication. In an effort to more quickly get naloxone administered, many initiatives across the state and nation have begun to get these doses out into the hands of citizens, out into the high-risk populations. This includes many pharmacies across the nation that now can give this, folks can just walk in and buy naloxone without any kind of prescription for it. And then many health departments as well, including our own, folks can go in there, be screened, and receive a dose of naloxone, even if it's for somebody else, not necessarily for them. So if they know they have a high-risk child or a high-risk family member, they could receive that.
Can I interrupt you a second? When you say if they receive a dose of naloxone, so you're saying they give them one to take with them?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, I've got one here, just to kind of pass around as you walk in the city for emergency kits. That's a four-milligram dose, that's just sprayed up the nose, like you would Afrin or anything else, any kind of OTC medication. So the way this came about is the State Office of EMS contacted a lot of the EMS agencies that use high-volume doses of naloxone throughout the state, and they had received a lot, so they started the distribution. So we were granted 218 doses from the Office of EMS, and there were no costs involved whatsoever to us, and then there would be more forthcoming, should we give all of those out, if you all approve that today. And so under our proposal, what we would do is any time that we administered naloxone on a scene to somebody that had an opioid overdose, we would then leave one of these kits with some treatment information and things with the responsible bystander, family member. If for whatever reason they were to wake up well enough and then refused to go to the hospital, then we would leave it with them, because naloxone is really kind of a, it just totally reverses all the effect of the narcotics. A lot of times, folks will go totally unconscious, that's why they called it Project Lazarus when it first came out, because they'll go from totally unconscious to just wide awake and talking, and it's pretty remarkable. And so we just feel like that if we get this into the hands of the community, that it can be the difference, potentially between life and death, when we arrive, especially if this has already been administered, that we might just have to do more supportive care. And then we've seen this kind of push throughout the nation. Recently, our current Surgeon General, Dr. Jerome Adams, in a statement emphasized the importance of having naloxone readily available. And in his statement, he had put out, for patients currently taking high doses of opioids as prescribed for pain, individuals misusing prescription opioids, individuals using illicit opioids such as heroin or fentanyl, health practitioners, family and friends of people that have an opioid use disorder, and community members who come into contact with people at risk for opioid overdose, knowing how to use naloxone and keeping it within reach can save a life. can save a life." So we just kind of want to follow along in that campaign. And with that, we'll take any questions you all may have.
I'd like to add a little bit, because we've talked a lot about this in our planning committee for the next opioid leader summit that we're going to be having. And at the last leader summit, at the end of the session, we broke out into groups and came up with a lot of strategies on what the community can do to reduce opioid deaths and to deal with this crisis that we have. And there are a lot of things that need to be done, but this is an important tool in the toolbox, and it just seems like it's evidence, there's evidence cross-country that this is a good thing, that it's working. It's helping to save lives. And I think we ought to grant the request.
I was like a fan.
So, okay, I'll make that a motion, and you can suggest.
Yeah, I would like to comment on the opioid. I've got a granddaughter that had two friends that have died recently. I'm not sure it was opioids, but now, as doctors tighten up on opioids, I think we're seeing a little more of the heroin in the market. People are finding alternatives. And I think this is a great program to give parents when their child maybe has done something and they don't want to go get the treatment, which they need, and then gives them an opportunity maybe to save a life long enough to get them where they need help.
You know, Tracy, especially to you, when y'all met out at, what was the church you went out to for the opioid?
Land Church.
And I made you reference that we need to find out what the doctors are doing, and I didn't get much reply back. Five days ago, Using Observer, opioids, colon. North Carolina medical providers are over-prescribing opioids despite first sentence. Thousands of North Carolina doctors appear to be breaking a new state law that limits opioid prescriptions, et cetera. And so it goes all the way back to the doctors. Not only opioids, but some other prescriptions they put out, without me getting into that any further. But I've said it all along, the doctors are as guilty as almost anybody in the pharmaceutical industry and so forth. And we're just not being tough enough on the whole chain on this issue. But Raleigh Using Observer, have you seen that article?
I have not.
Okay, five days ago. Big-time hit on the doctors in the state of North Carolina.
And that was actually brought out in our summit.
Yeah, but it wasn't hit hard as far as going to the source, in my opinion. And, you know, the doctors prescribe medicine, I mean, you talk to them about certain things, and their face just goes blank. I mean, they can't even talk about it generically, which is sad. I've had doctors literally run from me when I start talking to them about, when I used to, I mean, I'm still on it to a degree, ADHD. They prescribe it, and it can't discuss it. It's sad. It really is. And anyway, I won't go any further with that.
Well, we'll lighten this to that. I did see a program in New York Hospital, they're doing treatments void of the opioids. A doctor has come up with solutions, and some of it's pinpoint management to stop the pain and so forth.
So I just had a couple of quick questions. For one, you emphasized this doesn't have a cost to the county. These extra doses are paid for by the state.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right. And for two, the, what's it called? I'm getting it mixed up in my head. Naloxone?
Naloxone.
Doesn't have a narcotic or drug effect on its own?
No, ma'am.
And they can't sell, can they sell it? Or I guess, is there a black market for this stuff? Are we leaving something with them that would enable them?
Not that I'm aware of. When folks receive naloxone, it's really kind of an unpleasant experience. If you're on an opioid, it suddenly takes away any high that you would have gotten or any of the more pleasant effects, and it can create rapid withdrawal symptoms. So it's really not a high demand. And then when it's administered, you know, any benefit that they would have gotten from their purchase, or whatever their efforts were, is taken away.
Does it, and it's, obviously it works on heroin?
Yes, ma'am.
Because heroin's a mechanism, that's kind of the whole point of the whole thing.
And then any other prescription opioids, you know, the hydrocodones, morphines, fentanyl, things like that.
Okay, great. Those were my only questions. So does anybody else have any other questions? We have a motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Don't forget your applicator here, I don't need it.
Yeah, so many in your class.
Well, I'll let your parents take care of that.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Gaywood, it's your turn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is always a pleasure to come before you and to share with you what's happening at Alamance Community College. Of course, this morning, I have with me Ms. Cindy Colly, who is our Chief Financial Officer, who will participate in this presentation. And we have a request, we have a budget request, and that request is $6,807,249. The college is in its 60th year of operation, so we've been serving the people of Alamance County for 60 years, which is, I think, pretty significant. We offer an array of programs ranging from nursing to welding. I should have Cindy to work this. This is not working for me. Slide two is where we need to be. So we offer a wide variety of programs, as I said, ranging from nursing to mechatronics to university transfer and welding. But that's not all of what we offer. In addition to the curriculum programs, we have a very comprehensive continuing education component. And for example, through our continuing education, corporate education division, we provide a training to more than 30,000 registrants. I'm sorry, 3,000. My thinking is really huge here. The reality is probably not quite as big. 3,000 registrants just over the past year, and those registrants were employed by 100 different companies. Those companies included, but were not limited to, Cambro, Carolina Biological, Alamance Regional, Anderson Products, Engineered Controls, Ferris Dome Fabrics, GKN, LabCorp, Kaiser Roth, Sandvi, and the number keeps going. So we're making a really strong impact in terms of the business and industry in this area. Slide three. Let me talk about community outreach, and my point here is to make sure that you are aware that we're not just receiving budget each year and just maintaining. We want you to know that we're really doing some pretty tremendous things with the funding we receive from you. While teaching and learning is at the core of what we strive to provide, we have to also ensure that there are opportunities for our students, faculty, and our community to have broad experience beyond the boundaries of the college. With that said, here are some samples. In mid-March, we hosted the National Collegiate Landscape competition, had schools from all over the country, including Canada. 1,500 visitors came to the college, 800 students, of course, they brought their faculty and support staff. There were over 200 business representatives and sponsors and guests. There are companies there, some of the business representatives were companies representing Steel, Husqvarna, John Deere. These are major companies. And while here, they had an opportunity to experience several days of Alamance County, and hopefully they took back with them the great experience that one has here, and when they consider where to locate their plants, their businesses, et cetera, hopefully they'll keep us in mind. I understand that hotels in our area had some very good days in terms of the business that came here. Restaurants were filled, and the county received other revenue as well. By the way, the college won. We were number two among all community colleges participating, and number eight among all community colleges and universities participating from all across the nation. Gives me great pride to say to you that we beat places like Virginia Tech, Penn State, the University of Georgia, and Auburn. I mean, it's pretty cool to be from Alamance County, and Alamance County is making that kind of, that kind of contribution. National Writing Project partnership with UNCG helps teachers and students become better writers, and we are one of only, we're the, one of only two community colleges in the nation that's participating. It's mostly the big universities. We are partnering with the University of North Carolina Greensboro in order for us to participate. Writing is one of those critical skills that has been identified as something that we need to be very concerned about in terms of preparing the 21st century workforce. So we're honored with that as well. The only other community college that participates is in Oregon. I believe it's Chamecua Community College there. So one on the East Coast and one on the West Coast. Recently, we had the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources on campus, and we partnered on a World War I educational exhibit that attracted 1,000 people. 1,000 additional people came to our college, and many of the visitors had never been there before. So this is not only a way to help educate people in terms of history, but also a way to ensure that people know what great education they can get at the college. Last summer, and I've shared this with you before, the results on it have been absolutely outstanding. We had the inaugural Medical Bridge Program. That's a summer camp for African-American males to get them interested in science, math, and engineering, and specifically in the areas of medicine and dentistry. It is appalling to me to know that in all of the United States of America, we only have some 515 African-Americans in a pipeline to become doctors and dentists. When I say in a pipeline, I mean enrolled in a university, pursuing a medical degree. Now, we're not going to solve huge parts of that problem just by offering the Medical Bridge Program, but we can do our part. And the other side of this coin is that we have problems retaining doctors, and I know that. And one of the ways to ensure that we are able to retain doctors, especially those who will see a very wide audience, particularly underrepresented people, is to grow your own. So that's part of what this is about. That partnership included the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. It included Duke University, Wake Forest, and these people brought professionals to the campus, provided tours for the students. Almost wished I was a child again, so that I could have participated. It was just that good. It was awesome. I should be on slide four, Cindy. I don't know if anybody can really see that, but it also gives me great pleasure to share with you a few of ACC's accomplishments. The truth is, I think everything we do is in some way an accomplishment. The one that we are most proud of, and I hope that you can see that top-left picture, well, that is the Advanced Supply Technology Building. That building houses automotive, welding, computer-integrated machining, mechatronics, and HVAC. And the only reason that we are able to boast having that facility, the only reason that we're able to have a large number of students in each of those programs now utilizing modern, up-to-date equipment, that is, that meets industry standards, is because of the support that you've given us. And if I haven't said it enough, I want to say thank you, not just for the AATC, but thank you for everything you do. When you invest in Alamance Community College, you invest in the future of this county, you invest in the future of this region, and you invest in the people. It was Benjamin Franklin that said, and I like this quote, I don't use a lot of quotes, but I like this one in particular, "An investment in knowledge pays the highest dividend." An investment in knowledge pays the highest dividend. And I know that's true, and here's why. When I compare my little 401K to the return on investment that the college has in this county, it pales in comparison. Absolutely pales. I won't tell you what the 401K return is, but it's little. But the return on investment of every dollar invested at Alamance Community College is $4.40. That's a 440% return on the investment. The economic impact is $200 million a year. Now, that's using data that's a few years old. I submit you that it's higher than that now, but I can prove the $200 million. So what you do is just critical. If I was a very wise man, I'd probably stop now, I'm not that smart. Let me just say that our horticulture program continues to be excellent. For the ninth consecutive year, they've won state, first place at the state fair. In fact, they've won numerous awards each of those years. So they are an awesome program, and the faculty and staff are great as well. Culinary Arts put itself on the map a few years ago when it went to the national competition, beating out local, state, regional, Southeast Region, went to national in Phoenix. Well, we're on our way to the nationals again this year, would be in New Orleans. So that's two out of three years we will have participated in the national competition. The first time we went, we brought back a silver medal, hopefully this time we'll bring back a gold medal. Our Phi Theta Kappa students went to a statewide conference recently, and that's an honor society, and won 10-plus awards. And those awards, those students were so happy, and they're involved in so many different things, and these are our top students. These are the students that are making the A Honor Roll and the B Honor Roll, the President's List. These are great students. Let me talk just for a minute about a new program, and that's our Community Dental Health Coordinator Program. We're the first in the state of North Carolina among community colleges to have this program. The Dental Association featured, this is the American Dental, American Association, featured our new program in their journal, and this journal has a circulation of 250 million. So 250 million doctors, perhaps more than that, dentists in particular, have seen something about Alamance Community College. They know that we have this community dental health program. One of the executives from the national office in Chicago came down to be part of it. This is how interested they are. Last week, I met with Dr. Alec Parker, who is the North Carolina Dental Society Executive Director. He came to my office, and we had an in-depth conversation around this program and the value that we're bringing to this county, this region, and our state. And he vowed to assist us in any way that he can in order to get the word out, because when you navigate the insurance and the medical piece and have the follow-up, it can get very costly if you don't follow the right path. So this way, students, people will have someone to guide them through this process. I am very proud of this. There's probably not one person in the room that's not aware that through our Career in College program, we have a student who has been accepted to MIT. Young man, 16 years old, accepted to MIT. MIT receives some 19,000 applications each year, and they actually admit around 1,500. If my math is correct, that's about an 8% admittance rate. Not only did this young man get admitted, he got admitted early. Now, his family believes that the deciding factor in this young man's outcome had a lot to do with our Career in College Promise program. He has been taking college classes while enrolled in high school, and this has allowed him to kind of place him, separate himself from some of the others in that 19,000. For parents in the room, this is not on this board, but let me just share with you what Career in College Promise is. It is a program that allows tuition-free for students in high school, students who will be in homeschool, students from charter schools and private schools that come to Alamance Community College, take college credits, get college credit for those courses that they take. It also allows for us to have the middle college and the early college, and we are getting some incredible results. Last year, we had 62 students through this program who actually earned some kind of college credential. Get this, 16 of them finished the first two years of college. Actually, they walked across the stage at ACC, I think about a week or two before they walked across the stage to get their high school. before they walked across the stage to get their high school diploma. And that's how fantastic this program is. So, it saved mom and dad tens of thousands of dollars, and it got the students on a path to college. They don't have to worry about going to transfer into Chapel Hill or Duke or, maybe not Duke, but UNCG or wherever they go. They don't have to worry about, will I be able to do the work? They've already proven that they are quality students and can do the work. 14 received one year of college credit, and 32 received certifications. New programs. We have a huge number of new programs. I won't go through all of them, but they are mostly around science, technology, engineering, and math. Of course, we added two transfer areas, visual arts and music, to help students get onto four-year colleges. And here is something that we are paying very close attention to. And someone asked me recently, are you adding programs for the sake of adding programs? The answer is no. We're adding programs that align with the workforce needs of this region and this county. Now, I've had the honor of serving on the Piedmont Tri-Talent Alignment Strategy, which started last August. I'm on the Steering Committee along with some other college and university presidents, business leaders, Chamber of Commerce leaders. And when I look at what we are bringing online, they align just almost perfectly with what the needs will be in this region for some years to come. I am going to conclude my presentation at this point. Before I conclude, though, I do want to emphasize that the impact that this college has, not only the $200 million a year, not only the $4.40 return on each dollar, but that $200 million is equivalent to 4,865 jobs. So, that is the kind of impact that we're having. Our strategy is to continue on that vein and to really ensure that we're at the forefront, not only among community colleges, but among colleges all across the nation. At this time, I would ask Cindy Colley to come up and present to you what that $6 million-plus dollars will look like in terms of the things we will do. She will also speak to you about what we've done with the money that you gave us last year. I think that's important, that you know how we've used those resources.
Before you go, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
One comment first. All you need to do is drive on the campuses of Randolph Community College, Davidson Community College, to see what a jewel we have in this county, in my opinion, and look at the atmospheres there versus here. But I'm going to put you in the spot. Bond referendum passes, and we do what we do with Cummings and Graham. You'll have to ratchet up your programs, probably at ACC.
That is correct.
Can you give us just a small comment about what that would look like?
Absolutely. We completed a facilities master plan. Took us a couple of years or more to do that facilities master plan. We looked at data from EMSI, the Economic Modeling Specialist. We looked at employment data from Department of Labor and NC Connect. We looked at data from the North Carolina Community Colleges System, and it says that we will grow by 16%. So, one, I expect to have 16% more students. Two, we expect to have a new Student Center building. And that new Student Center facility will allow for us to provide comprehensive, contiguous type of services to our students. But a researcher who visited our campus just a few weeks ago, and he said, "One of the reasons a lot of students drop out is because they never get in. They come to the college, and they can't navigate the complicated system of admissions and financial aid and advising and so on." Well, it's doubly difficult at ACC because they're all in different parts of the, of the college. You cannot find these places. Very difficult. Even with signs, it's hard to do, and I've seen people literally be at the point of wanting to turn around. So, we're going to resolve that problem. I see a new biotechnology and life science building. And that building will provide the opportunity for a biotechnology center of excellence to flourish and would also create the space we need in order to grow in other areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. This is going to be a bond measure that will afford us the opportunities to have off-site centers, east and west. And those are important. Yes, the fact is that the east site is relatively, will be relatively close to our main campus. But that border is important. It's very important. Moreover, the way that we have it set up, the courses that will be offered in the east location will be more aligned with business and professional kinds of things, such as human resources and business programs and accounting. And by the way, these are areas where there will be large growth in this region. According to every study that I have been a part of, I have read, on the west, the very largest cluster of job growth in this state will be in healthcare. And this region is the same. And so, to the west, we plan to have some space that will provide us the opportunity to have healthcare delivery-type programs where we can meet the needs of the growing healthcare opportunities there. So, in a nutshell, I see a college that will be in time with the workforce needs of the 21st century. When we get there, we will have a training center for public safety. It would be a comprehensive training center. You heard someone speak earlier, Dave from EMS, the important work that they do. Madam Chair, you spoke on behalf, maybe not on behalf, but you talked about some of the things the sheriff is confronting. Well, we want to have the first-class public safety training center here so that our officers and people who work in that industry don't have to go all across the state to get the training they need. In fact, what we want to do is to draw others from other areas here to train alongside of our people who are from Alamance County and bring more revenue here. Hopefully, that answers your question. One of the things about economic development is, and that's what we are. We're an economic development engine. Economic development, one of the greatest ways, one of the best ways to impact economic development is through your people, through workforce development training, through education, and through facilities. And that's what we will do. Ms. Colley, please come forward and share how we've used the money we received last year and how we will use the money we hope to get this year.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the most interesting part of the presentation, the numbers. So, I'll try to make it as compelling as possible. It's hard to follow Dr. Gatewood. First, I'll just start with a quick college snapshot. Our campus, we have 455,000 square feet of buildings that we support with county funds, which is three campuses, three main campuses encompassing 140 land acres. Personnel, out of county funds, we support two full-time grounds with some part-time support as well. Three full-time public safety personnel, approximately 16 part-time public safety officers. And in addition, county funds cover our contract with Aramark that employs over 27 employees for maintenance and custodial services. And out-of-state funds, we have over 800 employees at the college. So, our county money that supports the facilities and whatnot is, of course, supporting those employees as well. Here's just a quick snapshot of our budget request this year. As Dr. Gatewood said, it's a little over $6 million in total. For current expense, we're requesting approximately 3.3 million, which we've only requested around a $76,000 increase over the prior fiscal year. We wanted to keep it level this year and just ask for basics, what we need. This is the lowest increase we've asked for in the past several years. For capital, of course, this is our, our big number. 2.7 million is what we're requesting, but this is largely consisting of our HVAC upgrades and maintenance, which is for next year, out of the 2.7 is $2 million. So, again, our total budget request is a little over $6 million this year. And as Dr. Gatewood stated, before I get into a little bit more detail about the numbers, I just wanted to go over what, what we've accomplished using the county funds that you've provided for us over the past year. First, we've made tremendous strides to improve our public safety department. As you recall, we're in a transition period from transitioning from just a security to a public safety department with full-time officers, sworn officers. This past year, we conducted two active shooter drills in conjunction with local emergency responders, including Burlington Police and Fire, Alamance Emergency Medical Services, the Sheriff's Department, and the Office of Emergency Management. We strengthened our partnership with the Sheriff's Department, which allows our sworn public safety officers now to be sworn in under the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Department. Another one that I'm kind of proud of is we installed a sidewalk from lower campus to upper campus for improved pedestrian safety. We had students and faculty and staff having to actually walk from our lower campus to upper campus on a drive, and it was making me very nervous. So, we were able to install sidewalk all the way to the AATC. So, thank you very much for that. Number two, we, of course, continued our HVAC projects. We replaced one of the three main HVAC units at the Dillingham Center, which is our Burlington campus. We did additional enhancements to the main building HVAC. And a new project this year is replacing our HVAC panel service, panel server. It has reached the end of its life. So, we started that project this year with $100,000 out of our county funds. And of course, later, I'll say, ask for another 100 to finish that up. Basically, if this server went out, we'd have to control all of our HVAC, HVAC by hand around. So, it would be a significant loss. Third, we proceeded with our backup generator project, Phase One. The college is now on battery backup for essential business continuity functions, and this is greatly needed to support backup of our essential business functions. And with all of this, number four, I put, even with all of this previously mentioned, we continue to successfully maintain all of our 455,000 square feet of buildings and 140 acres. Okay, so a little bit about our detail. I know this can get a little tedious and boring, so I'll go through this quickly, hitting the highlights. Our current expense request is 3.2 million. We only are asking for a little over 2% increase, $76,000. And what we'll do with this increase is three main things. Of course, number one, continue to improve the public safety at the college by transitioning one of our part-time sworn officers to full-time, bringing our total to four full-time public safety officers. Number two, and we've asked for this before, but still a great need for an additional groundskeeper. We only have two full-time groundskeepers for the 140 acres. They do an excellent job. As Mr. Sutton stated, our campus is gorgeous. They, they work really hard, but it'd be nice to have another person, especially to help with our 47-acre farm. Number three, this would just be, the increase will be used for general salary increases to keep our county-funded positions on par with state-funded employee positions. Okay, so into the big, the big stuff. The capital request. I split this up into two parts. One is HVAC and one is other. Of course, for the HVAC, we are pursuing performance contracting. We're in Phase One, and we have actually received proposals from energy-saving companies. And we are deciding, actually presenting to our Buildings and Grounds Committee and Board of Trustees this month, a selection for an ESCO, if you will. So, we are moving forward with that. But moving on, we still want to put out there what our needs are, because there's no guarantee with performance contracting that it would cover all of our needs for HVAC. So, number one, out of the 2 million for HVAC projects is replacement, is actually our Phase Two for main building HVAC replacement. The system is almost 45 years old. The good news is, we've completed Phase One, so now we need 1.3 million for the second phase. Number two, Dillingham Center HVAC. We did, we were able to replace one of the three makeup units this year, but we need to continue on with the other two makeup units and eight air handling units. So, 170,000 for Step Two of Dillingham Center. Number three is continue to replace our HVAC server. We started that this year, and just want to keep moving with that on to the next fiscal year with another $100,000. And it has reached the end of its life. So, and number four, out of the 2 million, is a chiller replacement. We've mentioned this request before, that we need to replace our second main chiller in the main building for approximately $450,000. So, the total HVAC request is 2,85,000. Next slide is our other capital needs at 702,910. Again, if we received our, our allocation amount as the same as last year, 440,000, we could cover over 60% of these projects, so we would prioritize. Just in the essence of time, I'll go through these really quickly. First, we would like to complete backup generator project Phases Two and Three for approximately a little over 164,000. Number two, we need to make some enhancements to our IT infrastructure. And the good news is, we can use some state funds in conjunction with county funds, so this is only $9,500. Fiber optic upgrades, grounding bars, core boring, this is all related to the growth of the college. We're just reaching capacity with our IT system. Number three is a combined painting refinishing, pressure washing, and renovating over 50 classrooms for a total of 94,950. Number four, campus safety improvements. Again, continue to improve the overall safety of all of our campuses. The big thing we would like to do is to continue to rekey our campus. For if we had a situation, we needed to lock down, rekeying would make this process a lot, a lot easier. Number five, some grounds improvements, handrails, sidewalks, and equipment for 39,850. Number six, replace our outdoor steps to main building for about $150,000 to get those in line with current regulations. The next is a new one we haven't had before, is a 15-passenger minibus for $45,000. We have a 15-passenger van that we need to replace and take out of our fleet. It's one of our highest-used vehicles on campus. Numerous programs for field trips, and this would cost around $45,000, a used, a used minibus. And then, the dental program, Phase Two, our last project. We've seen this before. We need to, for 150,000, so to adequately prepare the college's dental assisting students, we need to make sure that the college's lab remain current. And of course, this is one of our most popular programs. So, in total, our capital request is a little over 2.7 million. Most of that is HVAC, that hopefully we can use performance contracting financing. We just don't have a final number yet, but wanted to put those needs out there.
So, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, my understanding is that you'll be doing the financing for that, and then the debt service that's required to pay that off is going to come from the savings that this new equipment would generate.
Correct.
And then, but we agreed to continue our current level of operational support.
Energy.
Correct.
Right, for energy.
So, actually, in the next month or two, we'd be bringing that to you.
So, Brian, if we budgeted for that with what's being requested, but then they get the, the performance contracting finalized, do we just do a budget amendment then at that time and reduce the amount that we'll be providing?
Yes, I think Susan, Susan and I are scheduled to meet with Cindy to talk about the performance contracting issue before we get too far into this budget.
So, maybe we'll have that answered before you get your recommended budget to us. Okay, thank you.
Yes, our ESCO that, out of the three, is our top pick. I mean, there's, they have provided us information as to how much savings we would receive, but to make that financing payment would need the consistent funding from the county.
And the board will decide that this month.
Right, we're taking it to the board. It's, it's exciting. We're finally. It's exciting, we're finally, finally making progress with performance contracting. So, my last slide here, this is my last slide, I just put down some cost indicators and controls, just for information. First, the North Carolina Community College System collects information every year as to how much county funds each community college receives, and then they compare that to the full-time equivalent students, FTE. So, our county current funding per FTE for the prior fiscal year was $755 per FTE. We have around 4,200 full-time equivalent students, but we serve 15,000 headcount. So, comparing this to Durham Tech, which is right beside us, they're funded at a little over 1,600 per FTE, and Piedmont Community College is funded at 792. So, there's a range there. But I think it shows that the college is extremely efficient in how we use our county funds. Second, we give a summary of where the college is in the performance contracting process, which I've spoke to briefly, but we have, we're at a point, we're ready to select an ESCO, they're providing estimates as to how much they can save us, and also what projects they can complete, and how much we can finance over 15 years. So, that's all, it's all in the hopper, if you will, and we are meeting with Susan and Brian to discuss that. The third bullet point, just want to show that the college continues to pursue other opportunities to fund capital projects, because that's the big-ticket item, to take some of the pressure off of the county, you will, if you will, to pay for all of those projects. And we've been successful, we've received over 200,000 in the last three years to complete the B-building stairs, and also our department's safety renovation, which has decreased our county capital ask because of these grants. So, now I'll turn it over to Dr. Gatewood to conclude.
Before you go, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I apologize. Dr. Gatewood, the 755, what's the state average? Have you got a figure on that?
I don't have an average. I could get that for you.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, they collect it for all 58. I compared this to our peer group and community colleges that border us, and also community colleges that are similar in size and program offering.
Now, the second one you gave, you gave Durham Tech, what was Piedmont?
Piedmont.
Now, where, I apologize, where is that?
That's in Caswell-Person County, Roxboro.
Okay, Roxboro, yeah, okay, that's what I'm saying. And there was, what, 790 something?
790, too.
All right, the 4,000-some students, do, across the state, does everybody pay the same thing, the students, as far as tuition or cost of courses or whatever?
Tuition is set, that's set by the General Assembly, and so everybody pays the same thing. There is some flexibility in fees, what fees you can charge, and we're one of the lowest as far as fees that we charge to our students.
Now, do out-of-county students pay the same tuition?
Yes, yes.
The tuition is set by the state, so it's a state tuition set by state system of community colleges, it's all the same.
So, it doesn't matter whether they're in one county versus another?
State, if you're out of state, it is higher, but not out of county.
Right, exactly, okay. And last question is, briefly, the state money that you get, the increases, what benchmarks do they use to get you more money or to give you more budget, so to speak?
Well, we have approximately a $40 million budget, and 25 to 26 million of that is state.
Right.
And out of that 26 million, about 80% is for salaries.
Right.
And if there is, for example, a raise approved by the General Assembly, then it falls down to the North Carolina Community College System, we are given extra funds for those raises. But you're basically, it's a formula allocation based upon how many full-time equivalent students you have, that's the big part. In theory, the more students you have, the more money you get, and if you go down, the less money you get. Is that?
Sure.
Any other questions?
I had one. Mr. Sutton asked about the tuition. What about the fees? Can the fees vary for in-county and out-of-county students?
No, we charge the same amount.
Same fees for everyone.
Yeah, same fees for everyone.
And then I was wondering with the capital outlay request, is that included in the total, the county has been working on through, and through the Davenport Report, a big picture for all the capital needs for the county and the public school system and ACC? Are these projects included in this budget request, part of the capital outlay on the plan that we've been working on?
Yes, they are. In fact, with ACC, we had some projects that we didn't feel like, well, they weren't in the bond, and they weren't also probably going to be able to be funded by the county in an operating budget or an annual budget, so those are listed in the Davenport Plan. And then we've also figured dollar amounts for ACC on an annual basis, too, so.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great, thank you. At this time, we've been at it for an hour and a half. I think that we could use a short recess if you all are. You all, okay. To order? Thank you. Next on our agenda is Dr. Harrison, the superintendent. And as he comes forward, I want to take a moment to recognize our school board members who are here. We have the chairman, chair lady, Allison Gant, the vice chair, Brian Feely was here, he may have had to go by the time. Pam Thompson is here, I believe, and Tony Rose is here, and Steve Ampel is here. And I think that is everybody, all the school board members. And now we have Dr. Harrison to do what I believe may be the last budget presentation.
Oh, God.
I'd love to see back there, bro.
Since he's leaving ABSS at the end of this month, and, you know, of course, whatever plans you may have for yourself, this might be the last one, so enjoy it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, and I had a word of warning from the deputies back there to kind of hustle through this thing, so I'll listen to those guys. But we do appreciate the opportunity to share with you. What I have is, it's a 21-page PowerPoint that I'm not going to hit every page. You guys have seen it, but there are some highlights, and I just want to go through with you. That's, I think, what you ask of all agencies, to break down of those that we serve, Page Four. Page Five, I really can't go anywhere and talk about what we're doing without talking about our strategic plan. This community did an incredible job, I've said it 100 times since I've been here, of developing a vision for our public schools. Our staff, before I got here, put together a great plan to make that a reality, and we've been working very intently and explicitly on tying everything that we do to that strategic plan, starting with our budget. Exemplary classroom teaching instructional leadership, it starts with the teacher in the classroom. Great teachers want to work for great principals, so that has to be where we begin. Master plan for specialized programs, we'll share a little bit of this, written five-year facilities plan, that's been a big part of what we've been talking with you about for the last couple of years. World-class teacher working conditions, what are the conditions in which teachers want to come and work with us here in ABSS? Compensation for employees and classroom school support. So, when I talk about those goals, I usually talk about Goals Four, Five, and Six together. Progress we've made, I think we've shared this with you the last couple of years. Again, none of those bars are where we want those bars to be, when we look at school growth, when we look at performance on state tests, but all those bars are headed in the right direction. On the left, in the blue, is where we were in 2014. In the red on the right is where we were at the end of the 2017 school year, and we're getting ready to go into EOC and EOG testing in a couple of weeks, and we anticipate those numbers continuing to rise. I think this tells a better story. This has to do with growth, and the zero line in the middle is a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of schooling. We look at two things, we look at proficiency, the percentage of students at or above grade level, and we look at growth. That's are our students gaining a year's worth of schooling, a year's worth of education, a year's worth of learning for a year's worth of instruction. Zero means they've gotten a year. If you look, and then we have quintiles, there are five groups. A is the lowest-achieving group of students, B is the second-lowest group, C is the average, the kids in the middle, and D and E are our highest-achieving students. And often people will say, it's a little more difficult to grow the higher-achieving students than it is to grow the lower-achieving students. And 2014 through 2016, we were not even meeting growth with our higher-achieving students. Now, if you look, all five groups of students were considerably above that zero line. So, again, that lets us see that we're hitting all kids. So, our goal is to provide all students with access to their dreams, and we focus on each and every child that walks through our doors. Merit-based scholarship, you know, what's happening to our students when they leave us? $16 million worth of scholarships in 2016, 19.3 in 2017, and these are merit-based scholarships, these aren't need-based. So, that had to do with the instructional leadership, exemplary classroom. Our master plan for specialized programs, and we're really excited about the growth there. Many of you have visited North Graham Elementary School. We have Year Four of our A-plus arts program, Sylvan Year Two, Garrett Year One coming up. Our vision was to have one of these three specialized programs in each of our six high school attendant zones. We're not quite there, we're halfway there with A-plus schools, Leader and me, Newland and Andrews, and some of you were at Andrews the other day to see that program. This is a program that absolutely transformed a school in the period of three and a half, four years. Going into the heart river with that next year. I think a number of you have also visited our dual-language and global immersion programs. Again, those are models for the nation. We've had people coming from all across the country to visit those. And we do have a STEAM school, science, technology, education, arts, and mathematics at Beavard-Jordan. Our written five-year facilities plan, and again, this is what we presented to you over at Southern a couple of days ago, a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not going to go through that with you again, but we put together the Facilities Task Force back in the fall of 2014. We've taken that, the work of that task force, and we've been implementing a plan to address all those issues. World-class teacher working conditions, that's a survey that teachers take every other year, they just complete it right before the spring holidays. I can't quite read what those are, but there are about 40 items. These are three that we picked, that I picked out, and I think are really important. There's an atmosphere of trust at our school, teachers feel comfortable raising issues and concerns with their principal, and the school leadership consistently supports teachers. So, you can see, 2012 to 2014, we did better, to 2016, we did better as well. Compensation for building-level employees, we set out on a five-year journey, if you will, to ensure that our teacher supplements were consistent with those in Durham, Orange, and Guilford Counties. We said we add 1% to that supplement a year for five years, that would get us there in five years. We added 1% to Year One, we added a half a percent in Year Two, we didn't add anything last year. This year in this budget, we're asking for a half a percent to kind of get that train back on the tracks a little bit. Classroom school supports, we've increased the allocation, per student allocation for instructional supplies, and we've also, our team has done a great job of going out and finding other sources of revenue. We have, some of you have visited the program over at Graham High School. We took board drillers, about 28 drillers, over there last week to see the $2 million science lab that we have. It's truly, truly state-of-the-art. $1.5 million from Golden Leaf Foundation, partnership with ACC, and we got $500,000 in matching money. And again, this will feed right into Dr. Gatewood's Center of Excellence, the Biotech Center, in a couple of years. Our budget summary, that's 1718, that's this year. Again, that's information that you've had for a while, shows from where our money's coming and where our money's going. About 63% of our money is state dollars, 20% from you, and again, I appreciate, and I pointed this out, I don't know that I have it in this presentation or not, but I pointed this out to the vision group when we met at Andrews last week, that you've made significant increases in our funding each of the last three years, and we appreciate that, and I think we can demonstrate for you that we're getting a return on that investment, so I don't want that to go unnoticed. And this is just breakdown by positions, and this is similar information over the last two years and what we're asking for this school year. And again, this is, Susan, I believe this is the format that you guys requested.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
While we're on there, on this particular one, on principals, how does the county pay principals?
Principals are paid for the state.
For the state, okay.
They're allotted one for, I think you have to have seven teachers in a school to get a principal, and then we pay a supplement as well.
Okay.
Which comes from the county? Which comes from the county.
Supplement.
Right. Lot of numbers. Good to see you smiling, Mr. Lassie.
Good to smile.
Well, you keep it up, all right? Again, that's a breakdown of where our money's going, and this is what we're looking for this year. This is where the smiles go away, I'm afraid. I'm going to step out of here and be a moving target while I ask that. Our 1718 current expense budget is $40,681,907. That's what we got from you guys last year, and again, we appreciate it. That was a substantial increase over what we got in the previous years. Again, the last year, we had this in there as inflationary items, and I think it caused some confusion, so what we're calling it this year is continuation of current programs. If we want to continue operating as we are, it's going to cost us an additional $1.7 million. $300 and some thousand goes to a state retirement increase, state health insurance is going up, continuation of supplements at the present rate. Our supplements are nine and a half, 10 and a half, and 11 and a half, and of their state salary. So, we're projecting a state salary increase of 3%, so that means to maintain the same percentage of a supplement that our supplement rate is going to have to increase. Continuation of local teachers and assistant principal supplements, growth in charter school, and let me introduce Kim McVeigh, she's our interim finance officer. Shannon left us back in, at the end of April. Kim has been in that position, she's been our assistant finance officer, does a great job for us, and stepped right in there without missing a beat. And then, so that $220,000 for charter schools is based on history and where we anticipate we're heading. And then, we talked last year about losing some flexibility with some of our state dollars for the English-language learners' teachers, and we're losing that flexibility for AIG teachers, and that will cost us about $350,000.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I'm not sure if I understand. So, explain how flexibility translates into those dollars?
Okay, we get an allocation for AIG and for ELL, and then we also get teacher position allotments. So, in the state of North Carolina, teachers are provided, and the salary comes with them. Rather than giving us an average for salaries, if we get a beginning teacher, we'll get $35,000 plus benefits for that teacher. If we get a 20-year veteran with National Board certified, we'll get $55,000 plus benefits for that teacher. So, with flexibility, we're able to put our veteran teachers on the state salary schedule as, in a state position, and put our younger teachers on local positions, so that enables that AIG money and that ELL money to go farther. And one of the things the state is talking about is doing away with that position allotment and going to an average teacher salary allotment or something along that way. But this provides school systems with flexibility, I think, that we all need. Students don't come in neat little packages of 21 or 25 in the system or at an individual school either.
So, by implementing or taking away that flexibility, it's actually going, we're going to lose state funding to this amount you're estimating?
Yes. Our custodial program, we talked about our contract that we've had for the past couple of years, we've not been satisfied with that. We did a pilot over in the Western Zone this year of bus drivers and custodians sharing positions that we felt would be a more attractive job, easier to recruit, and it helped us some, but the recruiting of bus drivers is still not as easy as we would have liked it to have been. So, we looked at expanding that pilot or going with a different custodial contractor. Dr. Thorpe took a request for proposals out, we interviewed about five companies, four companies, narrowed it down to two, and have selected one. selected one. And that's going to cost us an additional one-point-three million dollars to make that change. And we've known that was coming for the last couple of years. We've been with the contract situation for seven, ten years. I think when the economy hit, we as a school system made the decision to kind of cut back on that contract, use those dollars elsewhere. And so, we really didn't have enough hours to do the type of jobs that we wanted. And again, we've seen some of our places do a great job, some of our places do a not-so-great job, and we need all of our places doing a great job. Our Facilities Task Force meeting this coming month, this month is going to be at Highland. So, we're going to show you one of our newest schools, our most recent school built with bond funds, and a school that's in great shape. So, we do have some that are out there in great shape. Teacher supplements, I mentioned earlier, the half percent increase. We have a scale for those who are with us, zero to five years, those who are with us six to ten years, those who are with us eleven-plus years. Assistant principal supplements and principal supplements, again, the same thing. We differentiate, and we also, for principals, we differentiate between elementary, middle, and high schools. There's a little more time involved in the middle. They're all complicated jobs. They're all complex jobs, and they're all important jobs, but a little more hours, probably a lot more hours at the high school. And our specialized programs, we're looking for a hundred-and-thirty thousand additional dollars, one teacher at the STEAM program at BEJ, and a teacher and a half at the A-plus school at Garrett. Our digital learning initiative, we've been on a journey, to go to a one-to-one environment for the past four years. We've worked with the Friday Institute out of NSC State in fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, provided great training for our teachers. We've had this in the budget every year. I kind of cut it out every year. This would be for a three-year lease over a three-year period. We'll have new devices in the hands of all of our students. And we've kind of decided that we either need to move forward with this, and this is on me, or we need to stop talking about it. So, that's an increase, a total forty-four million, eight-hundred, forty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, about a ten-point-two percent increase. What we've looked at with capital outlight is the million dollars that you've given us in this past year. There's where you can see that we're looking at it. We too are working with performance contract. I think we're at the sixty percent point. When we hit the ninety percent point, we'll be back to you. One of the things we've been hearing from the contractors is the return on their investment may not be as great on some of the HVAC things. So, we may end up, not by our choice, but by, this is what the company's going to do, limit that to lighting. But we'll still see significant savings. So, yeah, our total would be an additional million dollars there. The other thing that we've talked about with Brian and the great work that you guys have done with the Davenport Group and developing a plan for the foreseeable future, and to be honest with you, if we had done that ten years ago, we'd probably be having different conversations about some things. So, I appreciate you doing that. Susan, Brian, Andrea, and whoever else worked on that really did some great work. And one of the things that you had in there was four million dollars for us to take care of our roofs. And that's money out of the sales tax article forty and forty-two and lottery funds. So, what we're asking of that four million dollars, we settled with the roofing folks, Dow, about last board meeting, I think. Allison, Allison's tweeting while I'm speaking.
Yes. I'm sorry, say that again. Say that again, I'm sorry.
We settled with the, at our last meeting.
Yes, we did.
The other thing, we can handle that, we think, for about one-point-five million dollars, can get our roofs up to speed on those, take care of some other things. We'd like to take about a million and a half of those dollars, of that four million dollars, and put that into security doors at our high schools. All of our high schools have multiple entrances, and Dr. Thorpe brought some women to look at. They visit Southern, they visit Cummings, and they visit Wings.
Correct.
Because Southern and the other schools are the same. And Southern's the largest, so that's going to be the most expensive. But for a million and a half dollars, we can put in electronic doors that the doors would open at seven-thirty when the bell rang, and the doors would close at seven-forty-five when the bell rang. Teachers would have fobs in their classrooms to use as passes so students can get in and get out. In some of our schools, we've got wings without restrooms. So, there's no way that we can completely limit that movement, but we think that would be a good expenditure of those dollars. So, I guess we have to ask Brian or you guys or whoever if we could go ahead and do that. So, that's pretty quick. Not that it's not really important, not that it's not been given an awful lot of thought. Everything that we've asked up there, again, it's a lot of money, just like we talked with the bond, it's a lot of money, but there are a lot of needs. If we truly want that vision to become a reality in the school system, I think there's great momentum. I think the board did a great job of hiring a superintendent that's going to take this school system to the next level. And I told a lot of folks that I kind of look forward to sitting back from afar and watching things really take off, because I've invested a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of energy here, and have a lot of respect for the people in this county, and have a lot of pride in the school system. And, but I'm very optimistic about the future. And Mr. Sutton is a military guy, and I've been faithful for a lot of times, and I've watched them turn out those generals every two to four years, and they don't miss a beat. So, we're not going to miss a beat here with the superintendent, particularly when you've got one better than you have.
You can buy me lunch at Cedar Point.
We'll do that. After the vote. Any questions?
Well, I just want to make an observation that, out of, so, for the operational budget, we're talking about a four, roughly a four-million-dollar increase, and roughly three-fourths of that is just really not adding anything. No, I mean, some of that is from the states helping with teacher salaries and our part of that. But that doesn't make us any more competitive with the counties around us. But, and then, the custodial program, I mean, that's just fixing an issue that, where we had inadequate custodial services in the last few years that really hurt. So, that's part of our facilities.
Yeah, and actually, with the hours that we determined that we needed, that came in less than we were planning.
But, so, those two things alone add up to three million dollars. And then, so, it's really only another million for implementing other components of the strategic plan, which are, to me, important components. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'm going to miss seeing him up here. I mean, he's like a kicker down there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I was going to take a moment to thank Dr. Harrison and just to praise him for his leadership and the work with the school system in the last four years. Is that how long, how long it's been? It's just been a pleasure to get to know you and to work with you and to see what, how the school system has advanced and impressed under your leadership.
Thank you.
It's been exciting, and I also say that as the parent of children in AVSS. So, thank you so much. And we hope that you'll speak to us if you see us.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're going to see you at the golf course.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Any more questions? I hate to run, but I do have to be somewhere. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I want to say hi to Ms. Kim McVeigh. Ms. McVeigh's husband is a county commissioner. Isn't that right, in Castle County?
Yes, I think you do.
We had met him. He's very nice, and we look forward to getting to meet him.
Thank you.
Just the interim. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Haygood, what about these outside agencies and their budget requests?
Thank you, Chair Gailey. Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. What I'm going to do this morning, we have invited numerous representatives from outside agencies to be with us this morning in the event that commissioners have questions. I hope they're all able to be over here on this side with us and see a lot of familiar faces. I'm going to do just a brief overview of the requests and try to kind of give you an idea of what we've, what we're looking at. And you have a hard copy of this presentation at your chair. So, you can follow along as we go, and then you can also have it if you have any questions for any of the agencies that are here with us today. So, from outside agencies, which outside agencies include everyone except Community College and Alaman's County School System, the total dollar amount requested is well over four-point-eight million dollars. It's important to note that these funds are block grant funds that are state or federal pass-throughs. They're occupancy tax. They're also county general fund tax dollars. So, the funding for outside agencies comes from lots of different places. And what we have in front of you today, we have sixteen different agencies that are requesting pass-through funds only. We didn't invite those folks to be here today because they are not getting any county dollars. We, the county just administers state and federal money that flows through us, and we have other groups like JCPC, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, that administer those for us. So, we really didn't invite any of the folks getting pass-through funds only today. We have a few groups that get pass-through monies and county general funds, and those folks have been invited to be here today. So, we have another sixteen agencies that are requesting Alaman's County general funds, and I'll go through the list of them here in just a moment. We have two new groups in that category. We also have six agencies requesting occupancy tax funds. Two of those are new agencies. And we have five groups that are requesting mental health, maintenance-of-effort funds. I want to preface this by saying, we contract for those. We haven't actually negotiated those contracts yet, but I wanted to just recover that information because we do consider that outside agency funding. So, start off with, let's talk a little bit about the agencies from outside that get pass-through dollars. One of the pages in your handout has these folks. As I said, there's sixteen of them, a little over one-point-four million dollars in total that is pass-through funds. They're all listed here. Many of them have to do with courts, but you'll see a few, like Alaman's County Community Services, Meals on Wheels, Elder Care, and ACTA. They receive pass-through dollars, but they also receive county dollars, too. We have folks from those groups here. So, again, these folks, we did not invite to be here today because they are pass-through them.
So, are they, the ones that you just mentioned that also get county funds, are those county funds reflected in these totals here?
No, this is just the pass-through dollars. So, anything you see here, like for ACTA, for example, the seventy-six thousand and fifty-five dollars reflected here for ACTA, that is pass-through monies only. Those are state or federal monies that are coming to ACTA. So, this page that says Alaman's County Funds, these are the sixteen agencies that are requesting Alaman's County dollars. These are county tax dollars, and these are the groups that are requesting those funds. We have the Airport Authority, we have the Chamber of Commerce, Piedmont Conservation Council, Division of Forestry, Alaman's County Community Services Agency, Meals on Wheels, Alaman's Elder Care, North Carolina Symphony, the Medical Examiner, which the Medical Examiner, Susan reminded me this morning, is multiple folks, so it's not just one individual, it's several folks that we contract with. So, we won't have a representative today from the Medical Examiner. Alaman's County Rescue, ACTA, and again, here's ACTA, this would be ACTA's share of county dollars. Link Transit, the Home Care Community Block Grant Transportation Match, which is a little over sixteen thousand dollars, Family of You Services. And then, here are two new requesting groups, the Exchange Club's Family Center and One Step Further. And you can see, middle column is the dollar amounts that each one of these groups are asking for. And again, on this page, these are county dollars that they're requesting. And then, to kind of give you an idea of what's going on, it's either operational support, where the county dollars are going to be used to help them meet their mission, or they're a contract group, like the Chamber of Commerce. We contract with the Chamber for our ED service provision, our Economic Development Services. Or it could be a grant match. A number of these folks use the county dollars as a match for other grants that they receive. So, I'm going to move on to the occupancy tax requests. So, you know, occupancy tax, been a lot in the news recently about the occupancy tax. The county levies this tax on hotels. We have six groups requesting funds from occupancy tax. So, what we do every year is we project a dollar amount that we believe we're going to bring in in occupancy tax, so we can allocate it out. Now, we have legislation in place that tells us how to allocate. But this year, we've projected eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. That's what we believe for eighteen, nineteen, that we will have in occupancy tax funding. Of that eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, the Tourism Development Authority receives two-thirds, and that is by the law that allows us to collect those taxes. So, two-thirds of that eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars goes to the Tourism Development Authority. That dollar amount is five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty. That's what we will plan to budget for next fiscal year for them. The county retains three percent of the eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for administrative costs. Since we collect it, we process it, we divvy it out, that comes to a little over twenty-five thousand dollars that the county retains. And then, that leaves the county with, based on our projections, two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars to give out. And the local law gives us details about what we can use these funds for. So, at this time, for our third, which is two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, we have requests that total three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. You can see we have more requests than we believe we're going to have in occupancy tax dollars for the county to distribute. The total amount requested is nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-six. So, you can see we're over our projection. And in the chart there, you'll see the different groups that have made requests this year and the dollar amounts that they've requested. Tourism Development Authority, by law, they must receive their five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty. We have a request also from the Alaman's County Historic Museum. We also received requests from the Snow Camp Historical Drama Society. This is the outdoor theater in Snow Camp. The Alaman's County Arts Council has also made a request. And we have two new requests this year. The first one from the African-American Cultural Arts and History Center, and we also have a new request from the Blenko Textile Heritage Museum.
Can I ask a question about the Tourism Development Authority? What do they do with the five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars?
So, we have Grace here with us today, and I would defer to Grace, if that's, I'm sure she can answer that question. So, please come up.
Good morning, I think, still morning. The Tourism Development Authority and myself as the director there, we are responsible through advertising, either with the state or regionally, even advertising with, doing advertising with organizations, that we also attend events, either with companies like Travel South. I mean, the goal is to bring outside visitors to Alaman's County. So, a lot of it is marketing and advertising-based, which also includes us traveling. And typically, we stay along the eastern seaboard to attract our market here. We work very closely with the state of North Carolina through visitancy because we can really leverage our dollars with them. So, that is primarily what we're doing.
A way to get people to come down.
Oh, absolutely. And of course, you know, we're getting day travelers, we're getting overnight guests, and the way we market now with social media and all those platforms, we have the ability to extend even further because all of you are sharing that information. So, that dollar's extended further.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Grace.
You're welcome.
I think I've covered everything on the occupancy tax, but...
Grace, if Grace could come back up, let me ask her a couple of things. Not only do y'all advertise, like, do you, would you put an advertisement in a newspaper or a magazine or something like that? Is that something that's...
Yes, magazines, for instance. Right now, we do advertising in our state, which is a phenomenal publication for us and for the state of North Carolina. We do things in magazines such as the History and Heritage Guide, Carolina Heritage. As far as newspaper, we don't do too much in the local newspaper because although we'd love to have locals use us as a resource to find out about what's going on in Alaman's County, the driver is really to get the visitors into our area.
Great. So, what would a typical advertisement look like? What are you using to...
Well, we...
Would you put in our state magazine?
In our state, in past years, because we've just finished a rebrand, so things are changing a little bit, but in past years, we might do articles or advertising in the destination section. We might take advertising out for the Carousel Festival or the Dogwood Festival, which are two main events in the county. We'll also highlight things at the battleground. Or perhaps, if there's a special event, like Saturdays in Saks Park. So, we try to find those unique selling points that are going to convert into more folks coming to our website and convert them to travel more to our area. So, we try to...
Maybe even some of the...
I'm sorry?
Maybe even some of the organizations that are on this list, like the Arts Council?
Yes. I mean, with the Arts Council, this is a big year for them because...
And if we had the African-American Cultural Museum, that would be a target.
Yeah, yeah. And we just, we just had a partners' meeting. So, we had the largest number of partners this year come out. So, it gives them an opportunity to meet each other if they haven't before. It gives them an opportunity to, you know, see if there's even an opportunity to network and... and do a project together. So I think it's, it's really good, and I think we've come a long way. And, I mean, I enjoy it, but like I said, a lot of these folks, all of them, we work with already. And I do look forward to seeing Snow Camp coming back next season or next year.
Do you sometimes provide materials or T-shirts or things like that to, to events where maybe a municipality might not be aware that the TDA is, is doing something to promote their event or contributing to the event?
I tend to work a lot with, not so much the municipalities, but the groups that are organizing the events. So, you know, either we have a relationship with B-Town Events or it's the Destination Downtown Group in Meben or GABA. You know, we're working with those folks. So we, we're not at your level and councilman and commissioners' level because we're down working with getting that information from them so we can help support them. So as far as T-shirts and marketing materials, it's not a lot that we have done in the past, but it is something now that we have just finished our new brand to look forward to because things are changing. We have a new website that's due to launch in July, and we're looking forward to that. It's going to be more engaging and more inclusive of everyone, and that's what we want, that's what we need.
And the hotels have representation on the TDA, is that right?
Correct. We have, our board consists of three hoteliers. One happens to be Stephanie Williams with the Drury. The other's A.J. Owasoo from Hampton and in Meben. And Beth from, you guys will catch me, I shut up. Beth from the Marriott. Yeah, she'll kill me now that her name is escaping me. Yeah.
I know over in Greensboro, it's amazing, the tourism and the hotel occupancy that comes from sports events, that people come in, really from all over the country practically, not all over the country, but east coast, you know, soccer, you name it. Do we recruit, you know, sporting events, like, weren't we the softball capital for a long time or whatever?
We do have the Hall of Fame, the softball Hall of Fame in Burlington. So Burlington does host quite a few tournaments. We also partner a lot with Greensboro because their facilities, they have so many more facilities to offer. So there's usually a lot of overflow from that area that we, we benefit from. And that is something that we are still looking at strategically on what some of those markets are. So we have to look at where we're going to put those efforts because we have Burlington having the majority of the space available to accommodate certain tournaments. So that conversation has to be open and keep on going. Like, for right, we just submitted a bid for BMX for 2019. We haven't had them in a couple of years, they've gone elsewhere, so hoping that they return next year. So it's, again, it's kind of this open conversation. We love to use multiple facilities in the county, but that's not always possible because everybody has their own schedules, especially when they're using their facilities for local tournaments, too.
And we're getting ready to have a new hotel, I think?
We are, of course, the Fairfield is, is due to open up this summer in Meben. There was word on the street that True was opening in 2020. I think that's down at Kirkpatrick Road in Burlington. And we all know that Ramada has closed. So like yourselves, I'm assuming, we, we don't know what's going to happen.
Do you draw traffic from the furniture market?
We get a lot of overflow. And this year, we had a lot of competition between furniture market and we had multiple events, sporting events going on. So folks were having a hard time capturing a place to stay.
Do we get overflow from Orange and Durham Counties, too? Because there's not a whole lot of hotels on the interstate in Orange County.
I wouldn't say a lot like Greensboro. We'll get it definitely around special events that might happen with UNC graduation. We'll see that flow coming up, up this way.
There's soccer fields over behind, in Orange County, behind Buckhorn. Are you familiar with that?
Uh, no, sir.
Oh, yeah, they... They are nice and...
I mean, outside of, because they're not here.
In our county.
Right.
But if you had a, no, yeah, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job outside. And I'll, I'll be quiet, but if you had soccer tournaments coming in here that could, I mean, there's a, oh, God, eight fields over. And they are quality. And then you got Joel Davidson Park. And so, you know, it's...
I think the communities here are very willing, if the opportunity comes in to host a tournament, and they're lacking, that, they want that tournament. And they're going to look at properties within a certain radius from us to, to reach out to, to figure out if there's an opportunity to partner with them. I mean, nobody really wants to leave things on the table. Everybody wants to host it in their own...
You're competing with Greensboro on the way.
Yes, and I mean, their facilities are much larger, and they have more of them. Thank you.
I have a lot of questions.
Are we, can we ask more questions, or do you want to just come back?
Would you have more questions about occupancy tax?
Yeah, well, I wanted to ask a question of Carrie Worthy. I see that Carrie is here.
Yes, absolutely. I have one more slide left to cover about the MOE money. But at that point, this is exactly what this opportunity is for, for the board, is to look at these agencies and ask them any questions, call them up. We really appreciate each one of them making the time to come today and put themselves at your disposal. So the last piece I will cover before I just vacate the podium is about the mental health, maintenance of effort funding. So again, these folks are not here today, but we do consider these outside agencies. We are required by statute to spend this dollar amount, this one point two million dollars. We're required to spend that dollar amount by the state. Once the county was divested of its mental health responsibilities, this is the maintenance of effort funding that we have to spend. And what I've done here is shown you how we are spending it this fiscal year and how I suspect that we will probably spend it for next fiscal year, too. We contract with four different groups. We contract with ARMC for services at the emergency room for mental health folks. We also contract with RHA, they're our crisis center. They're also the group that we're talking with about the possibility of becoming a, a piece of our diversion center. We contract with Ralph Scott Life Services for some transportation needs that they have. And we contract also with Residential Treatment Services with some medication assistance. All these are funds that we use from this one point two million dollars. We also, this year, put about fifty-four thousand dollars of the one point two million toward our stepping up program. We've used those for certain program support. I would hope that we may be able to use these funding when we open this diversion center. We've talked about the possibility of meetings and a person, an individual, similar to how we do Family Justice Center. I would hope we could look to these funds to do that, too. So that's really all that I have. Again, you're, oh, can you bring it back up to second place? I'm sorry. The main, the folks here today are from this page, it's the Alaman's County Funds. And they're also from the occupancy tax page. So we have representatives here from, from most, if not all, of these groups. At this time...
Where do you go? What's the total amount being requested versus what we paid out last year? Have you got a figure on that?
I don't have what we paid out last year. It is less. The total dollar amount was four point eight million dollars. It was less. We had a number of groups that went up in their request for county funding. So I don't know, Susan, it's just off the...
Okay, so it's, it's more than it was last year, right?
The requests, their requests, the requests are for more than we paid out.
What I would like to have seen was what we gave them last year and what percentage increase that they want this year.
Sure.
And cost, I know, and I'm not going to mention any names, but I have seen, like, there's one on here where there's X amount of dollars, and it's almost triple what it was when, when I came on the board. Now, granted, that was a long time ago, but bottom line is, I'd like to see the numbers.
So I think in your packet, there was what we call snapshots. They're, they're, give that information about what they asked for in seventeen, eighteen. I don't have it in my PowerPoint, but if you look in your packet, there's, there's info. And I have a hard copy here, Mr. Sutton, I'd be happy to give to you right now. Let me pull my stuff off the top. This should give you an idea of, and if you've got your packets up in front of you, you can see here what they requested in seventeen, eighteen versus what they did in, what they're asking for in eighteen, nineteen. So...
Well, that actually was what I was going to ask of the Arts Council because I noticed that last year they were, they had eighty thousand dollars, which was a pretty big increase from the year before, and now it's, the request is one thirty-five.
So that information that you have shows those, those figures. And then if you, you look in your packet, look, look down a little further than the cover sheet, you'll see those, those pages there, too. At this time, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you and if folks have questions for any of our reps that are here today.
All right, thank you. And, yeah, you gentlemen, as you review these things, we have the people here if you have a question.
Could I go ahead and ask?
Can I have Carrie answer my question?
Good morning.
Morning. Do you want to identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Carrie Worthy, Blounton Albright Avenue, Graham, North Carolina. I'm the Director of Alaman's Arts for Alaman's County Arts Council.
Thank you.
So the, the purpose of the significant increase over last year and how you were planning, or what was the need for the increase?
Right. So basically, why we asked for the increase, what we are looking at is the tax dollars from the hotel tax. The increase would have been what we, what we looked at, what we would have been getting this year because the hotel tax is based on what they think is going to be and then in the end, what they plan on, what they will actually get. And so we looked at that point and requested what we see of what we should have gotten this year from the hotel tax, and that was our increase. And what we are trying to do with those monies is to increase our programming. Two programs that we're looking at is a new festival in Graham and a new festival in downtown Burlington that will hopefully increase people coming into the community. This next year, we will be doing an exhibition this summer that we hope that will increase the people coming. It's the Kenneth Block Exhibition. With that, we will be doing other programming. We are looking at having a fashion designer from New York to come down and do a fashion show for us as part of that exhibition. And we hope through those programs that we will be bringing in more people into Alaman's County. We did do a, part of a national survey last year, and we found that the arts do eight million dollars in impact to Alaman's County. And so we do feel like we're trying to make an impact on what we do here.
I didn't have any other questions for Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to ask Jane if you would maybe explain a little bit about the, the need for this African-American Cultural Arts and History Center.
Okay, thank you all commissioners. Yes, the need for the African-American Cultural Arts and History Center, we feel is important because there's very little representation of this popular, of course, I'm a part of that population in Alaman's County. We do a lot of programs throughout the county. We're not just preserving Burlington's African-American history. We preserve Alaman's County's African-American history. We have partnership with the May Memorial Library. We have exhibitions in there. We do drive-in tours, walking tours. And we have a lot of information. We have a lot of documentations about the great contributions African-Americans have played in this county.
Do you have a committee? Have you started a committee?
Yes, we have a board. We are a five oh one, C three. We have a board of members.
Who's on your board?
We have nine current on our board. Our board president is here today, Mr. Gary Wiley, Jr., who's here. And our vice president is also here. And so our, we haven't, we didn't just start this yesterday. We've been preserving Alaman's County history for about three years now. We started a couple of years ago going, doing walking tours for the Richmond Hill community. We was hoping to make that area a historic district and then found that it was more important to preserve the history than it was to have a district.
Do you have a museum location?
We are right now in communications with, for building downtown Burlington that is our ideal location to be because Burlington is going through a revitalization process. And we feel that being in the hub downtown Burlington is the great, is really the best place for being down there where to help bring other people downtown Burlington as well expand the knowledge of this population, of this county's African-American population.
Let me ask you a question. Have you looked at doing it in conjunction with any other facility that exists? And that, and the library upstairs over May Memorial, is that floor still deserted? Okay, and I know when May Memorial inherited that building from Sears, I think, the Gant family, if I'm not mistaken, if I can remember correctly, donated that building beside May, and that, that was where the enlargement came. But the upstairs is still unused. And, you know, I remember asking somebody a long time ago, could we not convert upstairs to something? And, you know, the answer was, it wasn't stable enough, maybe for full-scale enlargement. But I think that's worthy of asking somebody at the city. I mean, you got a hole upstairs, it's, uh... Nothing but concrete, I would assume, going straight across the top of May Memorial, or at least the Sears building part. And it looks like that could be used for something, maybe on a smaller scale. But the city told me it wasn't stable enough to put a lot of stuff up there. Anyway, have you, have you looked at doing anything in conjunction with another building that exists or another program that exists?
Well, to answer both the questions, let me address the second one first about the library space. We, because of a partnership with the library, we're aware of that space upstairs, but there are no elevators in that building. And they're having to put a lot of money in renovation space for the library as well. MJ are seeking some needs for more office space for the people, you know, her, her employees there at the library. So what they were hoping to do is for us to kind of have a combined space with the library up there. But there's costing the city a lot of money to even get past that. They have to get the elevator, they found that there's an elevator shaft, but there's no elevator in the shaft. So, and then the other, I think, some lighting and all these other things, this cost is, looked like it was going to be up in the millions of dollars. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but that is going to be sometime down the road. It is something that we've talked about, and that's why we solidified our partnership with the library. And if any of you all have had an opportunity to come to our events in the library, we have packed that place out. And the last number, we had a hundred and seventy-five people. We were overflowing into the, the library. So, you know, it's, it's a great thing, and we know the community wants to hear this history because it hasn't been represented, you know, so people come out. But we, we would love to share with that space, but that's going to be something down the road. That's why we've looked into other spaces downtown Burlington.
Now's the time to push Ian Baututhus to take a, take a look at that because that's just wasted space upstairs, and someday it's going to be converted. And, and I grab it now, if you could grab it now, push Baututhus, he's the guy to go to, you know? He likes this one.
I'll say, Jim...
He's the guy, so, whatever.
Being the only Democrat on this board and Ian being a Democratic mayor, no, but, oh, it must be a year, the year that Jane asked me to attend a meeting with Harden Watkins, the city manager, and we talked about that issue. Jane's looked into a lot of different options on trying to figure out how best to establish this, what I think is a very important service. It's the museum and the cultural arts. And, you know, my racial equity training, this has historically been a white world. It's been controlled by white people, and through those years, the contributions of the African-American community has been sort of covered up. And, and there's some tremendous contributions that Jane has made me aware of. But they, they just don't, nobody knows about it. And to have this in our community would provide a great impact on youth, African-American youth in particular, about, and giving them hope about what people of their own kind actually were able to, to contribute. And it would give them some great guidance, I think, and just enlighten the rest of us white folks as well as some of the contributions of this community, so. I appreciate you.
Jane, what about, and I admire your passion and your knowledge on this subject. You and I have met, and I just really appreciate your fierce advocacy for this project. What about Mr. Sutton's first question about sharing space with some, some other place besides the library?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sutton, as well as Ms. Gailey. My concern about, it's really not a concern. It's just that we feel that it's important that if you're talking about sharing a space with another museum concept, if that's what, are you talking about?
Well, possible. I'm not trying to belittle your concept either, I'm just trying to look at practicality.
I want you to ask the same question.
I think a lot of people have asked that.
Well, let me tell you the reason why we... Well, let me tell you the reason why we prefer having our own, we feel like that it's need, we're need to have our own individualized space, because Alamance County's history is told all around us. Everywhere you turn is Alamance County's history, but not Alamance County's African-American history. And when you're talking about combining the knowledge, and you go into any museum across the world, and trust me, I have traveled in and out of the state of Alamance, of North Carolina and around, just researching museums, concepts, meeting with these executive directors and their board presidents, and finding out what goes into, first of all, the sustainability of the center, because this is not a fly-by-night center. When I'm dead and gone, this center will be still standing, for people to come farther after us. It is my desire that people that, the young generations to come, like the centers that we have now, like the Alamance Plantation and Alamance Arts and all these, these are sustainable centers. So, in doing so, I have gone to all these museums, and I've met with these directors and found out how to make it sustainable. But what I've also noticed, as you probably also have noticed when you go to museums, museums, is when you see the African-American section, you see a little small corner, you see a small section, and that is not the representation of Alamance County's African-American history. Alamance County's African-Americans have made so many contributions that a little section would not cover it all. We still have to play catch-up to educate our community of what hasn't been talked about in the schools, anywhere around here, it's just not here. So, that is why it's important that we have our own building, our own section, so people can learn more, otherwise, it's going to be watered down. That's, that's why.
One concern that I've heard people raise is the, there's a museum in Greensboro that has not flourished and done well, and there's a concern among people that your, this project would come under the same fate. What would you say to alleviate those people's concerns, or how would you respond to that question?
You know, I get that question a lot, too, and I'm, there are so, yes, the International Civil Rights Museum, we all know, had their challenges, but the International Civil Rights Museum also does not have that solid foundation that the Greensboro Museum has, that the High Point Museum has, that the Harvey B. Gant Center has, that the Kate Fear Museum has. These are people that I sat down and spoke to individually and with their board presidents and found out, what do they have to be sustainable? Now, also, I'm wise enough to know that I want to know what doesn't work, and I've also sat down with some of those of the Greensboro, the International Civil Rights Museum, and found out they do not have that structure. That is why, when I go and I speak to and have, you know, offered to speak to some of you all, I haven't had a chance to speak to you all yet, I hope to get around to, to let you understand that the reason why we're taking these measures is because I've met with the people that's already sustainable. We don't need to compare ourself with people that's not sustainable, we need to compare ourself with people that are sustainable. Success seeks success, we don't need to seek failure. We can learn from failure, but we're moving forward in success. And having the support of our counties, of our cities, and our schools, and our libraries, that is building, those relationships holds the sustainability of the centers, it's a relationship. It takes a community to raise a child, it takes community for all of these, and other centers that are here that are successful, without the support of them, they would be in the same situation that the Greensboro Museum is in. But unfortunately, the International Civil Rights Museum does not have that support, and we don't want to go there. And we're hoping that you all are, will have that same support with us and say, hey, we want to see this, too, because it's not Burlington's history or Graham's history, it's all of our history, it's Alamance County's history. And I'm a native of Alamance County, born and raised here in Alamance, graduated from Eastern Alamance High School, so, and I know, I have family here, I raised my children here, and I'm proud to be from Alamance County. But what Alamance County is missing is the knowledge that African-Americans have contributed in this county. So, with your support, it will help us to be successful. Now, I think we're success, we, we all want to be successful, so success, joining success, we can't do nothing but be successful.
You know, what's sad, though, is, over the years, you know, I've done a lot of research and would love to go there, the Gullah Geechee Center down in Georgia, right across South Carolina line, very familiar with that, and what they do to raise money, and they sell baskets, the woven, hand-woven baskets, that, that, they are, let me get the word right, I always get it backwards, they're descendants of slaves, and are you familiar with it?
No, I'm not.
Are you serious?
I'm serious, I haven't been to that one, I will put it on my list to go.
Well, it's, it's down in Georgia, right on the line, Gullah Geechee used to cover the whole east, eastern seaboard, from Maryland all the way down to Florida, the region, and now, it's really concentrated in South Carolina, Georgia, and the museum, the center is called the Penn Center, like, well, Penn, P-E-N-N, and they operate out of a house, and they sell, I just recently purchased five CDs of Gullah Geechee Language of the New Testament, and when they talk, you can Google Gullah Geechee and listen to the way they talk, it's, it's just wonderful, and, but they're having terrible problems there because people just won't support it. Now, I'm saying they wouldn't support you, but please look that up, it's Gullah Geechee, and it's in, I want to say, it's right on the line in Georgia, in South Carolina, and you can Google people speaking the Geechee or Gullah, whatever language. Now, down at Myrtle Beach, they've got Atlantic Beach, which is the Black Beach, Black Pearl is what they refer to it as, and it's in between Wendy Hill and Crescent Beach, okay? Well, when they consolidated all those beaches into North Myrtle Beach back in the late 60s, 69 or 70, Atlantic didn't want to go in with them. They said, we want to stay there incorporated, they have their own city council, and they do a, they raise their money off of Gullah Geechee projects, and, and, but please look that up.
I will.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting history, but they're having financial problems, as popular as that ought to be, with people that don't support it, as they should. I mean, I'd love to have one of those baskets, but you can buy them in Charleston and Hilton Head and so forth and so on, and it's pretty interesting, but.
Sweet Chris.
Huh?
Sweet Chris.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
If I might add just one more thing, I know the African-American Cultural Arts and History Center, we have a museum concept. We won't just have a museum, we will have, a state-of-the-art center is our future goal of it, we know we have to crawl before we walk. But there's other two more important components that will start, when we open the doors of this center, we will have the museum galley, galley, where people can come in and see the history, but there will be a genealogy research section as well, where people can come in and research their family history, as well as an African-American research study. And we know that during the weekdays, when people may not be able to come inside or to see a museum, they will come for other reasons, because we have so much more. We have the arts component, we have the classrooms where people, and some of this, what I'm saying is, future plans of the center, but there, when we open the doors, our desire is to open the doors with the museum concept, as well as the research library. Many people are searching their family heritage, and this is not just for African-American history, this is for anybody to come in and research their genealogy, and hopefully, establish other partnerships to get their DNA testing done on site and things, so, it's, it's much bigger than just a museum.
I was going to mention that I, I think a lot of museum cultural areas that are more regional, larger ones, are having financial trouble. I read a big article about Colonial Williamsburg is really having trouble getting people, because people are, you know, they're planning their vacations differently from how they used to, and children aren't maybe as interested in going to a place like Colonial Williamsburg.
See, when I was a kid, my parents went to places like that.
Yeah.
Now, they want to go somewhere else.
Or there's fun rides.
Or, and no money.
A roller coaster ride.
Also, I'd like to add one, you know, I've done my research with that, too, because, you know, as we continue to reinvent ourselves, museums have to also have to reinvent themselves. We've got, children have telephones and all of these gadgets and gadgets on their phone, in order for those centers to stay up with it, they have to also change and make more interactions. And so, we're, a part of our plans is have interactions, so where youth, elementary school, toddlers can come in, and they can touch and be more active in touching things and be able to learn. But if they just come in and just stand and read, children today are not just going to do that, they have to have some of those things. So, we understand with the flow, and we have some millennials who, you know, part of us that can help us keep up with those trends, to keep people coming in, but again, I'd say, that component is just the history component, there's so much more to the center to offer than just a museum.
That was a lot of questions.
Yeah, have you, have you had some fundraisers to get, I mean, you're going to have to have community support.
Yes, yes.
To make this work, it doesn't matter if we give you all the money in the world, less community is behind you on this, and what have you done in that aspect?
Oh, man, we actually have two coming up right now. We've, we started out, well, we did a couple of them last year. This February, we did Soulful Sounds of History, where we had Bobby Bennett and J.C. Davis, well, J.C. Davis, he's still living, he lives in Ohio, and him and Bobby Bennett grew up on Rahut Street, and he was part of James Brown's famous flames, he graduated from Jordan Sellers. So, in February, we had our exhibitions around them in the library. We had J.C. Davis come here, as well as Bobby Bennett's wife, Sandy, and her family come here. Now, Bobby Bennett was inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and he passed away in 2013, but the family came here, and so, we had a great event of music and songs people could hear and talk to their families, and we, we have donated, their family has donated the suit that Bobby Bennett wore when he was inducted to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, we had his award that he was, the jacket, and with all of these things where people could come and learn, and who knew that Bobby Bennett and J.C. Davis were part of here, Alamance County? So, but, you know, a lot of people did not know, and they came out, and we packed the house in the library with that, and then, in, in March, we recognized Alamance County's African-American phenomenal women, we speak your name, we recognized over 50 women, past and present, we had their exhibitions all throughout the library. People did not know, some of these women are still here today, doing fabulous things, making great waves for the community, you know, we talked about Ms. Nana Collins, who wrote the Negro News back in the day, and made sure that all of those articles was in because African-American news wasn't being put in the paper, except that it was negative. So, Ms. Nanny Collins made sure that the people in the community knew the positive things that African-Americans played. Well, while Ms. Nanny Collins was doing that, in Burlington, you had Ms. Mabel Poole here in Graham, doing, providing those things in Graham. A lot of people didn't know these, and so many more, these are just a few things. And then, we were doing now, we're talking about the men, Black Music Month is June, so we'll be talking about black music and men, and we're going to be recognizing phenomenal men, outstanding notable men throughout Alamance County on those days.
You're going to use these to raise money, as fundraisers?
Yes, yes.
All right. Before you go, I got to ask you a question. Bennett played sax, right?
No, Bobby Bennett.
Did he sing? Was he one of the singers?
He was a singer, he was, okay, Bobby Bennett, if you ever watched James Brown, and when James Brown would go, please, please, you know, fall out on the floor, Bobby Bennett would be the one consoling him with the, you know.
But there's a live CD, I've got several of them, but there's a live portion where Brown says, Bobby Bennett, what you got in it?
Yeah.
And then, they named several, I was thinking he played sax, okay, that's somebody else. Okay, free, all right.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Any other questions about outside agencies? Okay, thank you.
Look pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. And Mr. Hager, what about the June 4th meeting?
So, at this time, I have a request that takes two actions from the Commissioners. One, I would request that the Board consider changing the time of the June 4th Commissioners' meeting from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is the night that we would be having the planned budget public hearing for the 18, 19 county budget, so I'd like for you to consider moving the June 4th meeting from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And also, I'd like for the, ask the Board to consider relocating that meeting. We expect that for the public hearing, we'll have a pretty good crowd, it'd probably be wise to think about moving that meeting. So, if the Commissioners would consider changing the time and determining a location and voting on that, then we'd also ask the Board to, after doing so, vote to set a public hearing for that same time and that same place for the budget, so.
We agreed on Cummings for our second meeting.
We talked about that, do y'all want to have it at Cummings or at the Historic Courthouse?
I think that'd be a great idea.
I will say, I think, maybe just about Cummings, I don't know if there were any, Bruce, did you, we were at Southern, did the school system have any commentary about Cummings?
They said they could do it at Cummings, but it may not be, you know, we'll have to check on the scheduling, you might want to have a backup location, that's what I would request.
Cummings or Williams.
Because, you know, the dates have changed and all that kind of stuff, so originally, we got pushed back a date, so the date they were talking about was open, but now, not so sure.
So, if the Board wants to go ahead and go with Cummings today, then we'll check today and make sure that it's, it's available.
I would say Cummings or Williams.
Do you think Williams is a backup, or could we do it at the Historic Courthouse? Do you think we need a place as big as Williams?
I think, trend has shown that Williams has been much larger than what we've needed in the past, so I think, maybe if you're going to pick a school, just one today, if that's Cummings, that's great, and as soon as we leave here, we'll check with the school system and find out, and if, if, for some reason, Cummings is not available and we have to change this, I think we would still have time on the 21st to make this change, is that correct, Tori? If we, if, if we're not, if Cummings is not available, the Board wants to go to Cummings, we find that out this afternoon, we would still have time on the 21st to change the June 4th meeting, so.
You can always go to the courthouse.
So, if the Board wants to go to Cummings, if you'll go ahead and change the meeting time and location and set the public hearing at this time, we'll check, confirm it, if that won't work, I'll be back before you on the 21st, probably asked to go to the courthouse at that point.
Okay, so, the first vote would be seeking a motion to change the time of the June 4th meeting to 7:00 p.m., and to set the locations as Cummings High School.
Make a motion to that. Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so, the second vote would be to set a public hearing on June 4th for the budget.
So, move. Second.
Is there any more discussion about the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, what about the second meeting, Jane?
Chair, pull it.
Second meeting will be the, that's the 18th, that, that will be the meeting where the Board will actually adopt the budget, so the plan right now is to have the public hearing on the 4th, for the Board not to adopt anything that evening, choose to do it on the 18th.
Do our part on the 18th.
Yes, the Board could either flip-flop and go to AM meeting on the 18th, or leave it as it is. Right now, the 18th is an evening meeting, and it is here.
That'd work perfect for me, because I have a class in Greensboro on that 18th that is from 8:00 to 2:00, yeah, so.
So, the, right now, at the 18th, the June 18th meeting is scheduled for 7:00 p.m. here in this, in this office.
That'd be perfect for me.
So, if you leave it that way, you know, I suspect most folks are going to come to the budget public hearing to comment. I don't know that we would have as large a crowd, so you could leave it, 18th evening, 7:00 p.m., right here.
Perfect, for me, anyway.
Great, we're always glad to accommodate stuff.
Right.
The War Memorial, next budget amendment, War Memorial donation.
Good morning Commissioners, this is a pass-through grant that is awarded from the Alamance Foundation that is designated for the cleaning and maintenance of the Alamance War Memorial here in Graham. These are pass-through funds, so upon approval of this, we will issue a check to the Alamance War Memorial Committee.
And that's come out?
For $1,500.
Make a motion with approval. Second.
We have a motion to receive the $1,500 in a second, is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The IT Department.
Change, change hats for a moment. So, we are requesting permission to use performance managed funds to increase our security here at the county for IT security, $130,700. Three separate issues would be putting some firewalls in place internally that would further segment, segment our, our network so that if we do get hacked, it would be isolated. It's also from a separate brand, so all their power and anti-hacking is embedded in that system, so we have two, now we have two different systems fighting the same folks. In addition to that, a lot of, if you've read in the papers and stuff like that, we've had, you know, Atlanta, Mecklenburg County, Durham, Davidson, some other folks have had some hacks, some have been successful, some have been stopped and didn't pay ransomware, but they had to pull up backups and they were, had to go to paper for months, and those kinds of things. What's becoming more and more prevalent is that we're What's becoming more and more prevalent is that we're our own worst enemy when it comes to our staff, and we're doing a lot of training in regards to that. But one of the things you probably already do yourself for banking or something like that is two-point authentication. So that means you get a text that says you put the number in at the same time you log in. So that ensures, again, it prevents the hackers from getting in and doing all their mischief. And so we're going to implement that at the county level as well. Again, these recent events have kind of moved us forward in that regard because of the danger that's been ever prevalent. We also had a self-audit with the Health Department, that kind of, they made recommendations on that as well. And of course, the last thing we're going to do is, we're already working with Homeland Security, where they do passive, passive hacking attempts on us, because they found that their back doors into Homeland Security is where they get a lot of their problems, so they're working with local jurisdictions. But it's a passive penetration test, so we're going to pay, we'd like to pay a North Carolina company to really focus on us and really try to hack us and, and learn from that and get better. So that's what, what these funds are for.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Second.
That sounds splendid, great plans. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Health Department. So we have two separate budget amendments requiring two separate votes.
And I think the first one you have is for Delta Dental in the amount of $3,000, $5,000. This is a foundation grant that we have received from the Delta Dental Foundation Smiles for Kids Program. We've been the recipient of this grant for a couple of years now, and with this amount of money, we are going to purchase new hand, the dental hygiene hand tools, which doesn't sound super exciting, except that there have been some rule changes around autoclaving. And so these hand tools actually, one tool has three different removable heads that can go on. So instead of the whole device going to the autoclave, just the part comes off and that goes to autoclave and you can still use the tool, just with a, a new head. And so this gives us the ability, instead of just having three hand pieces, you have nine to 12, depending on how many other heads you get on there. This is foundation money, so it requires no match. Any questions about that one?
I think the match was key words. I make a motion with approval.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next.
All right, so the second one you have is for environmental health with food and lodging. This is, we have received funds in the amount of $49,336 by the North Carolina Division of Public Health to be used in our food and lodging and environmental health sanitation programs. These are funds that we get because our county and our staff is 100% compliant in getting into restaurants. Not all counties are like that, so I feel lucky that you're in a county where we get in every restaurant and lodging institution. And when other counties don't, that, those funds come back to the state and then they divvy them out back to the counties that did complete 100% compliance. So that's what you have before you now in the amount of $49,336, which we'll be using to purchase vehicles to, again, replace some of our aging fleet. We still have some cars that are from the late 1990s. There's also a request in there for a, a well camera to replace a broken well camera that is in environmental health now. And then the rest will be used in small tools for things like light meters, thermometers, some charging equipment for GPS, the GPS units.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just feel safe going to lunch here and hold it, man.
You should.
Let's go get some lunch. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you.
Thank you. County manager, you got a report?
Just two, two things. Madam Chair, one, just remind the board that our next meeting on May 21st, I'll be bringing the manager's recommended budget for your review, so I'll be looking forward to that. Second thing I have to touch base, I'm going to pass this out to you. We're starting to get inquiries about bonds. What are bonds and what do they mean? And we've worked to put together some information here that we will share with the public via our county website. This is right in line with the county strategic plan to be transparent and open. We've asked County Attorney Alright to review this information to make sure that none of it could be construed as we're advocating for the bond. But what you'll find in here is just questions that people are having about what, what does this mean? How will it be paid back? What does the sales tax mean? It's basic info that we plan to post online. And there's also a couple of pages in there of text that we'll also plan to put on the website, it'll be a part of county government's website. So I wanted to be sure and pass that out to you, let you review it, take some time to look over it, give me a call if you have any concerns about it. But our plan is within a week to have that posted, and hopefully the public will be able to access this if they have questions about how bonds work and what all this means. But again, we've been very careful to make sure it's not to be construed as we're advocating one way or the other.
So can I ask, Clyde, is it okay for commissioners to advocate, or are we not allowed to advocate either?
As long as you don't do it on county town. That's the rule.
Usually it applies to county personnel. But as an elected official, you're free to do what elected officials do.
Okay.
But you just can't spend county money advertising or advocating one position versus the other.
I think it's important that we represent that we're speaking for ourselves and not for the county. I think that that's an important distinction. And I think that this is a good idea with the accountability and transparency pillar that we have with county government to help the public to understand what decision that they will be making and the financial impact of that. I personally find it difficult to understand how people don't justify their vote. Elected officials should, if you vote for something, you should expect the public to question you about it. And I have a hard time understanding how that's not always, that's not the.
You know, it's the separation that's hard. You and I both have been approached on all the airwaves about how we were going to vote personally versus, I mean, they know our vote here.
Right.
But then they, they're pressing, and I, I wouldn't seem to tell them how I felt about it, and then my answer was, I'm going to vote for it.
Right.
Don't agree with the total request, don't, don't agree with the total process of what they've done with redistricting, and I've made my comments about it, but I do support, I know some people don't, a new high school. And, but we were asked point-blank, are you going to vote for it? And I, you know, you do, they do have, we voted here, but they didn't know how we, with person. I thought that was kind of a rare indis question, to be quite honest about it. But I answered. And that's what we have to deal with as citizens, that's what we have to do, deal with as elected officials.
Right, and Mr. Burden, I was asked that as candidates, too, by a newspaper, how we were going to, how, what our opinion was about that. And I agree with something else you said a few months ago, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen, and people should expect you.
I have asbestos pants. So, let me ask a question now. There has been some talk publicly about management of the funds. In other words, if the bonds are approved, the question was, is there any oversight from us as to how they spend the money? In other words?
Yes, that's one of the, that's actually one of the questions in this document, because we're getting that question, too. Does that management rest with the Board of Commissioners?
I'm sorry?
The management of the funds rests with the Board of Commissioners. So the school system has provided lists of things that they want to do with the bond money. If they, and it could happen, they could want to deviate from that. They would have to come back to the Board of Commissioners and get approval from you before they could do that. So ultimate management responsibility lies with the board.
I can tell you, in Guilford County, they approved a bond referendum over there, said they were going to build a new high school over between northwest, where I'm at, to southwest, put it in between, was actually going to call it airport, because that's where the airport is. They didn't do it, and used the money for something else. And that's what people are asking.
Well, I think this will, maybe this will help folks better understand from a very objective point of view. I appreciate Michelle Mills, she worked to put this together, and we're with Clyde to help make sure it's, it's on the level and can't be viewed as anything other than information. And one thing I want to also comment on, I think it's important to note, after ABSS's presentation, I sent you, the Commissioners, that information about, we're looking at, I believe it was $6.8 million for school capital next year. And that's, that's right in line with our plan from Davenport. There's an additional about $800,000 there that's from the settlement for the Ruse. But I think that that will go a long ways to help ABSS start addressing some of the things that they're not able to get in the bond. So that, that's good news. I know we didn't really talk about it, but I wanted to be sure that you guys knew that and you had that information. And that's all I have.
Great, so we've kind of wandered into Commissioner Combs already, if he may have